Will now come to order, please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor Simbo Udunaye of Christ International Community Church here to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council.
Good evening, Mr. President and all council members. It's a great honor and people like to be here this evening to pray with you. Thank you for inviting me. Bring you greetings and good wishes from all the folks at Christ International Community Church. Let's bow our heads in prayer first. We thank you, God, for all the blessings you have poured into this country, this state, and this city. And as we pray the prayer of King David in Psalm 67, we thank you, Father, for your grace and goodness. May your face continually shine upon us so that your ways may be known in our communities. We praise you, God, and may all the people of this city have cause to praise you. Then our land will yield its harvest, and you, Lord, will bless us. We thank you for this council, the council president, our mayor, our city staff, our first responders, and all those who work to make our city such a wonderful place. May you crown all their efforts with success. Now, Lord, we give you our land, our homes, our labor, and our city. Look with favor on our community, protect our citizens and leaders, and enrich our land so that we may be a blessing to others. We pray that you will be honored and lifted up in this community. We pray for peace in our world, especially because the world is a global village now. Conflict in any place affects us in our city. We pray, Lord Almighty, that you will bring peace to reign in every corner of the world. Where there is conflict, that that conflict will come to an end, in the mighty name of Jesus. We declare by faith that this city of Columbus will be a godly city. We pray and declare that righteousness will prevail in this city. We pray for every leader in this city, mayor, council president, council members, and all others in authority, that they will lead justly and with godly wisdom. May this city become a citadel of hope for all her residents, and may our leaders serve our people with the fear and abodition of the Lord. May our city be a shining star among the cities of this nation, and may your kingdom come in the city of Columbus, as it is in heaven, through your power working in each and every of these your servants. May your truth be revealed, may your light shine brighter, may the voices of those most silenced be heard loud and clear in our city. As the council deliberates on the affairs of this city today, we remember the apostle Paul writing to the Christians in Rome and his teaching that those in authority are first and foremost your servants, that honoring you and doing your will will be their highest purpose. And so we pray that God will be glorified tonight through the decisions of this city council. We pray that you will guide their deliberations this evening, and that every deliberation will be done in the atmosphere of peace and civility. Inspire them, oh Lord, to make good decisions for this city. In Jesus' blessed name we have prayed. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Awkward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers, reserved for city officials, or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Awkward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing now the Journal is approved. This week's communications received by the City Clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the City Bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now go around the dais for resolutions and announcements from members. We have a lot of folks that we want to and initiatives that we want to speak on tonight, so hang tight with us. It says that we're going to go out of order though, and that we're going to start with Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. March is Women's History Month, a time to set aside to honor women's contributions in American history. From women's suffrage to racial equality and educational rights, countless women have helped pave the way for future generations. As Women's History Month comes to a close, we'd be remiss if we did not acknowledge and celebrate the women who keep our city running. Mayor Andrew Ginther has hired a historic number of female cabinet members, each of them leading departments that impact our residents on a daily basis. We wanted to take this time to shout them out and say thank you for their hard work and dedication to our city. First, and if you don't mind standing, we would like to recognize Chief Elaine Bryant. Where's Chief Bryant? Who was appointed to lead the Columbus Division of Police in 2021, where she became the first black woman to hold this position. She started her career with the Detroit Police Department, where she rose through the ranks to deputy chief over the course of 20 years. Now, Chief Bryant oversees a force of over 1,900 personnel. Thank you, Chief Bryant, for your service.
Next, we have Kristin Atha. Director of the Department of Public Utilities, who leads nearly 1,200 employees across many divisions, including water and the mayor's Office of Sustainability. Additionally, Director Atha serves on many boards, such as the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or Morphy, and the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. Thank you for your service, Director Atha.
Next, we have Amy DeLong. Amy was first appointed as the Executive Director of the Civil Service Commission in 2011. Director DeLong previously served in positions at the State of Ohio Department of Development, Ohio Department of Transportation, Capital University Law School, and ManTech International.
Next is the city's first Inspector General, Jacqueline Hendricks. She was appointed by the Civilian Police Review Board in 2022. In this role, her and her staff investigate allegations of misconduct and excessive force. Previously, Inspector General Hendricks led a long career at the Detroit Police Department. Thank you so much for your service.
Next, we have Ms. Danielle Tong, who has served as the Executive Director of Celebrate One since 2023. Where she has led their strategic plan to reduce infant mortality and maternal health disparities. Prior to her current role, Ms. Tong served as the Director of Capacity Building and Community Knowledge for the Columbus Foundation. Thank you for your service.
Kelly Skoko, interim Director of the Department of Public Service. Has over 24 years of planning expertise across both the public and private sectors. Before starting as interim director in January, Kelly served as deputy director for seven years, where she oversaw things, all things, transportation, including planning, designing, construction, and maintenance. It is a pleasure to work with you, Director. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Next, we have Director Bernita Reese, who first joined, oh, yes, who first joined the Recreation and Parks Department in 2022 after leaving her role as the Director of Parks and Recreation for the Department of Huntsville, Alabama. Director Reese has an extensive experience in public, private, and military recreation, and she serves on multiple boards, including Sports to Cobb.
Next, we have Christina Ratliff, who has served as the Director of the Columbus Women's Commission. Previously, she was a policy advisor. Director Ratliff has had over 12 years of experience as a public health professional at organizations like Celebrate One and the Association of Maternal and Child Health Programs. Thank you for your work for the city.
Kathy Owens is the first black and first female Director of the Department of Finance and Management for the city of Columbus. She oversees the staff of more than 300 employees, responsible for facilitating crafting and monitoring the city's four hun, or four, I just gave us a big raise there, four billion plus operating and capital budgets. She also serves on several boards, including the city's Depository Commission and Treasury Investment Board, Sewer and Water Advisory Board, and Commission on Black Girls. She is a force to be reckoned with. Thank you for your service, Director Owens.
We also want to take a moment to recognize the directors who were unable to be here tonight. Director of Public Safety, Kate Pashati. Previous Director of Public Service, Jennifer Gallagher. Director of Neighborhoods, Carla Williams Scott. Health Commissioner, Dr. Mashika Roberts. Deputy Chief of Staff, Robin Davis. Previous Deputy Chief of Staff, Dawn Tyler Lee. Previous Deputy Chief of Staff, Kimber Perfect. And previous Human Resources Director, Nikki Brandon. Can we give them a round of applause as well? And just to wrap up, just about an hour ago, we took a moment in time to recognize all of the women leaders that serve in the city of Columbus. And I just want to echo the remarks again and say with a full-hearted thank you for the work that you continue to do on behalf of every single resident in the city of Columbus. Without your dedication to the city of Columbus, we would not be able to thrive the way that we have been. I would also like to thank Linda Cabo Bianco, I believe is around here somewhere, as well as Clerk Angie Blevins, my staff, and all of our staff that have helped to make this celebration as beautiful as it is. We invite all of you to join us this week for more events, as we continue to celebrate Women's History Month all across the city of Columbus, as well as uplifting the leadership that serves for the city of Columbus. Once again, we honor you, we appreciate you, and we thank you for your commitment to making our city a place where we cannot just survive, but we can also thrive. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. And yes, happy Women's History Month again. We'll now get back and go around the dais, starting with Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Council President. I'll be very brief. Again, congratulations to all the folks that we recognize and for all the women during Women's History Month. Tell folks all the time, you want to get something done, get you some strong women around you, and we get the things done. So thank you for your service to our community. First up, I just want to remind folks, on April 10th, my office, in partnership with the Department of Development, will be hosting a public hearing to discuss a newly proposed designated outdoor refreshment area, better known as a DORA, for the downtown area called the Center City DORA. The hearing will start at 5:00 PM and will take place at Land Grant Brewing Company, located at 424 West Town Street in Franklinton. I have been advised that I am not allowed to have a beer during the public hearing, but that does not mean that other folks can't. So please enjoy Land Grant while you're there. Any resident wishing to provide testimony about the proposal during the hearing should email JP Dorval, my legislative aide, at JP DORVAL@columbus.gov by noon on the day of the hearing. Additionally, just another reminder that the Accelerate Columbus program is still open. We do have a few slots still available for some of the programs. So if you know any entrepreneur or small business owner that needs technical assistance with their business, please have them check out our Accelerate Columbus programs that are available to them for free on the city's Small Biz Hub. That's CBusSmallBizHub.com for more information and to apply. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla.
Thank you, Council President. I want to again invite folks to join me on Thursday, March 28th, for our event titled A Woman's Work: Building Our Future Today, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Strong Water, Food, and Spirits. It is a free event, open to the public, and while registration is not required, it is encouraged. We have nearly 100 folks registered for the event. We will be highlighting a couple of the programs that we are investing in that is supporting women and families, including Bloom 614, who will share information about the Mob Hill Growing Home Ownership Fund, which provides black and brown first-time homeowners with up to $15,000 down payment assistance. The Columbus Financial Empowerment Center will give a presentation about their free financial services, open to the public. And we will hear from a panel of female entrepreneurs, activists, and artists who will share their journey as women leaders in our community. So you can check out my social media, council social media, or you can do a quick search in Eventbrite for a Women's Work, and you can RSVP, or you can join us from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in Franklinton at Strong Water, Food, and Spirits. Thanks. That's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember DeAwkward.
I have two announcements tonight. First, a reminder, it was announced last week that I'm having my Women's History event tomorrow night. It's a networking event entitled Game Changers Women's Sports in Columbus. We'll be at the North Bank Pavilion from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. It is open to everyone, and we're honored to have some amazing sports icon delivering remarks, such as Stephanie Hightower, who was president of USA Track and Field. We have OSU basketball coach Carla Morrow, and Columbus Fury Ambassador Audrey Flo. We will be having refreshments. Just show on up. And secondly, April is widely known and celebrated as Earth Month, but it's also Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. And as the spouse of someone living with Parkinson's, this issue is very close to my heart. As such, I'm proud to be using my platform in the coming month to elevate a number of community events and organizations related to supporting those living with Parkinson's. On the consent agenda tonight, I'm sponsoring legislation to help fund the Parkinson Foundation's Annual Moving Day Columbus Event. Moving Day is an inspiring and empowering annual fundraising walk that unites people around the country living with Parkinson's, their care partners, and loved ones to help beat Parkinson's. Moving Day is more than just a walk. It's a celebration of movement, which has proven to help manage Parkinson's symptoms. Moving Day proceeds advanced Parkinson's disease research, increased access to quality care, and provide education and outreach initiatives to people with Parkinson's. So please consider joining us at this event. It will be taking place on Sunday, April 28th, at Wolf Park, with activities beginning at 11:00 and the walk beginning at 12:30. If you would like to sign up and walk as part of my team, you can scan the QR code on the screen now, or you can visit my social media pages, where you can view the flyer and sign up using the QR code there. So I look forward to sharing more about this next month. Thank you, Council President. That's all for me.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember President. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight, I have ordinance 0061X-2024. Yes, my apologies. To recognize and declare March 2024 as Development Disabilities Awareness Month. Development Disabilities Awareness Month is a nationwide event to raise awareness about inclusion of people with developmental disabilities in all aspects of community life. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Christine Brown, who's a clinical research assistant at Ohio State's Nisonger Center, to the podium. This year's theme for Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month is A World of Opportunities 2024. And we at City Council encourage residents to support opportunities for individuals with developmental disabilities in our community, including full access to education, housing, employment, and recreational activities. DDAM is a month marked by advocacy and outreach, aiming to bridge gaps in knowledge and foster a more inclusive society where individuals with developmental disabilities can participate fully and equally. With that, I'd now like to turn it over to Ms. Brown.
Thank you. And this is Marcy Strater, the first board member of the Franklin County Board of DD. We're both here, and I want to thank you all for recognizing this. To educate, county boards of DD started all the way in the 1950s, but became effective in 1967. We have came a long way with a lot of people moving out of institutional settings, getting into community jobs, and really trying to pave the way to see that we try to work together to have more people be included in all aspects of recreation, like Special Olympics, and advocacy, and a lot more things, because individuals are the asset for the job in the counties. If individuals didn't exist, county boards wouldn't exist, and this job economy wouldn't exist. Marcy?
I would like to thank you all for recognizing DD Awareness Month. We had our event at the State House, which was really good a couple of weeks ago, and I hope one day you can all come and join us. And thank you from the Franklin County Board of DD.
Well, thank you, ladies, for your continued work in support of a community that's near and dear to my heart. I shared last year that my aunt has developmental disabilities, and it was predicted that her quality of life would be poor, regardless if she would even live past a certain age. And she has lived a very full, independent life because of organizations like yours. So thank you for the work that you continue to do to advocate on behalf of those in our community. And with that, I would move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Awkward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed. Adopted. In full transparency, Councilmember, Marcy Strater is my big cousin. So it's an honor to have my family in chambers today.
Thank you. That's all I have in my, oh, I apologize. We actually have an update on Sawyer Towers. If I could turn the podium over to Deputy Chief of Staff Brian Shin, if you could provide us with some, an update.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor, President Harden, members of council. It was announced today that there is an insurance settlement for the 149 households who are the former residents of Latitude 525 Apartments. They are going to be eligible to receive disbursements beginning April 1st. Each claim will be approximately $10,067.11 in lump sum, and these payments will be administered by the Legal Aid Society of Southeast and Central Ohio. Moreover, accepting these settlement funds does not prevent these former tenants from also pursuing claims against PACS Latitude, the former landlord, to attempt to recover additional funds. The last update is that the property is still on the market, and interested parties may contract the Whittler Group. So we're very excited about this settlement.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Mr. Shin, do you have a point of contact if anyone who's watching might have some questions about the settlement?
I would have them contact Tiara Ross in our office, please.
Wonderful. And we can make sure we can get that number provided for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for me, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Green.
I think, nothing for me tonight.
Councilmember Remy.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to remind everybody that our annual Cleaner Columbus Citywide Cleanup is April 6th at 9 o'clock at Goodell. You can go and register at cleanercolumbus.org. We encourage both individuals and groups to do so as we make Columbus a cleaner place to live. That's cleanercolumbus.org. See you on April 6th.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Weich.
Thank you, President Harden. Two, one quick announcement, just a reminder that tomorrow we will be hosting the first Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee hearing, coming out here more about net metering policy, the city's climate action plan, and all the Earth Month activities for the month of April. Next, I have Resolution 0063X-2024 to celebrate Columbus Recreation and Parks Department's conservation team for Women's History Month, and recognize the numerous contributions of the conservation team to the city of Columbus. As we close out Women's History Month and kick off Earth Month, I thought it was only fitting to honor the city's all-women conservation team. While continuing with my remarks, let me invite the team up to the podium. This team of amazing women are preserving our environment and natural resources for generations to come. The team you see in front of you has a combined six and a half years of, sixty and a half years of experience. Now, before I let Tina say a few words, I want to tell you a little bit about the amazing women standing at the podium. Tina Mohan is the administrator of this amazing conservation team and has worked 20 years in the field with numerous positions in Columbus Recreation Parks. Jenny Dowen is the Natural Resource Analyst, focused on policies, procedures, and guidelines associated with pollinators, threatened and endangered species, natural preserves, ponds, and sustainability and recycling. Rosalie Hindon oversees natural resources and forestry planning, focusing on planning, policies, data reporting, and project management, as well as consulting for conservation support on all department projects. Casey Unser is the administrator of the Conservation Outdoor Education and Recreation. Casey oversees all aspects of programming and projects associated with this section. Leah Akers is part of Casey's team and has experience working in outdoor education and recreation. She focuses on educational programmatic management and development. And then we have Sydney Duval, who is focusing on recreational programmatic management and development in outdoor education and recreation. Next, we have Julie Hatton, who is one of our infield conservation managers, focused on the green infrastructure program, natural trail development, and ecological site assessment of our natural park spaces, assisting with project managing ponds, streams, and wetland projects. And last, but certainly not least, we have Pam Steck, who is also an infield conservation stewardship coordinator, focused on volunteer conservation work and invasive species removal, plantings in our natural areas and wetlands, and in-stream ecological projects. Let's give them all a round of applause for all the work that they're doing in this city. And if I butchered anyone's name, my apologies. If someone had a hard last name, it happens all the time. But Tina, let me kick it to you, see if you have any words to share.
You nailed them all. Every single one. You did great. Thank you, Councilmember Weich, Councilmember President Harden, and everybody else with Councilmember. We'd just like to say truly thank you for making it a priority for the city of Columbus as an opportunity city, recognizing that green spaces provide diversity, equity, and inclusivity in the city of Columbus. With 422 parks, 20 nature preserves before, now we've added five more, with over 14,000 acres, 3,000 of which are just natural spaces, we couldn't do the work without your support. And for the city of Columbus, it's an asset in and of itself for us to protect these sorts of spaces. In a world where we know we have challenges with development, in a city that we know in 20, by 2030, we'll have 2 million people, we know that we have, this is the work that we have to do, that we're charged with, and that we have a lot of pride, take a lot of pride in the work that we do. And thank you, Director Reese. Just in 2023, Director Reese had the vision to create the conservation section within the Department of Recreation and Parks. We hadn't had that prior to that. So thank you for your continued support. We appreciate you all.
Let me pause there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. See? All right. We'll see you. No questions or comments. I move for adoption of the resolution.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Awkward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
Harden.
Adopted.
And that is all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. As a reminder, there'll be no council meeting on Monday, April 1st, so the next regular meeting of City Council will be Monday, April 8th. My first resolution for presentation tonight, as I read it, I would like to invite Micah Mitchell and folks representing Trans Ohio to come forward. Welcome to council.
I have Resolution 0064X-2024 to recognize March 31st, 2024, as International Transgender Day of Visibility. In January, Ohio banned gender-affirming healthcare, and they continue to work to limit access to public restrooms, sports, and even legal recognition. This council is appalled by the legislature's radical agenda, and it runs counter to the welcoming, inclusive spirit of the city of Columbus. International Transgender Day of Visibility serves to recognize our trans community, to honor and acknowledge the lives of our transgender individuals, and to denounce any discrimination, prejudice, and violence. Trans youth in particular deserve to feel safe, supported, and accepted for who they are, and should not be bullied by their state. We're extremely proud to be passing this resolution tonight, and later this evening, I'm proud to be voting to fund a new partnership with the National Association of Social Workers of Ohio Chapter. The program will equip social workers with the tools and knowledge to better support teens and help transgender youth access healthcare that they need. At this time, I'd like to invite my colleague Melissa Green, who is co-sponsoring this resolution with me, to make remarks.
Thank you so much, Council President. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We celebrate Transgender Day of Visibility every year, first and foremost, of course, to celebrate the lives and the contributions of transgender people on our community, but it's also an important time to draw attention to the challenges and discrimination that are facing our LGBTQIA+ community, particularly our transgender and non-binary youth. In 2023, over 400 anti-LGBTQ bills were filed across the United States of America, over half of which were specifically targeting transgender people, particularly our youth. And Ohio, unfortunately, was one of those states with ultimate passage of House Bill 68 restricting access to gender-affirming medical care and transition services and increasing the regulations on the provisions of gender-affirming mental and behavioral healthcare services. Never, ever, in Ohio history has there been a law restricting standard practice so explicitly and without any basis in research or best-practice standards. The passage of House Bill 68 has created a time of uncertainty for our community, especially for our transgender, non-binary, and gender-diverse community, and so that is why today it is even more important than ever that this council affirms our unwavering commitment to our transgender and gender expansive community. Bias and discrimination have no place in our community here in Columbus. Bias and discrimination have no place in our healthcare system, and bias and discrimination have no place within our policy or at our State House. We are grateful for the opportunity to honor and recognize our transgender community today, and we will continue to fight alongside you to work towards a just and equitable future for us all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. With that, I'll turn the floor over to Micah, Micah Mitchell.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Thank you, Councilmember Green and all council members. We're humbled to accept this resolution on behalf of our community. My name is Micah Mitchell. I am here today on behalf of Trans Ohio, which is a trans-led statewide nonprofit dedicated to education, advocacy, support, and fostering community within transgender and allied communities across the state. I am also joined with some incredible advocates from the community as well today. We extend deep gratitude to the Columbus City Council for this resolution, recognizing Transgender Day of Visibility, affirming the value of transgender people in our communities and the heightened risks that we currently face in Ohio. As we express our appreciation for this resolution, we realize that this moment demands more than mere visibility and acknowledgement. It demands action. It is crucial for us to recognize that simply acknowledging Transgender Day of Visibility is not sufficient. Visibility alone, devoid of safety and acceptance, falls short of what our community truly needs and in some cases even harms us. Being transgender and visible in today's political and social landscape entails significant personal risk. In a society where our community is constantly dehumanized and reduced to stereotypes, our visibility becomes a tool for discrimination. Thank you to City Council for acting to ensure that visibility is accompanied by genuine safety, acceptance, and respect for transgender individuals. We applaud your concrete actions in providing funding to the National Association of Social Workers Ohio Chapter's program, providing practice guidance to behavioral healthcare workers in response to House Bill 68's passage, a law that will ban gender-affirming care for youth. This program is critical to ensure that continued mental health care and safety for gender expansive youth in Ohio continues. Today and beyond, we urge you all to do three things. First, challenge dominant one-dimensional narratives about who trans people are and see us in our entirety as whole people with full lives that are shaped by but are much more expansive than our trans identity. See us as people across genders, races, and ethnicities whose humanness, livelihood, and liberation is inextricably tied with yours. Second, please join us in fighting for a city, state, and country where we are truly safe to be visible, safe from oppressive laws that seek to deny us healthcare and access to equal accommodations, and safe from verbal and physical violence. Now, more than ever, we need allies to step up and speak out against anti-transgender legislation and administrative rules. And last, please support your local trans-led organizations and emergency funds directly supporting trans people and families that are most impacted by unjust anti-transgender legislation. Again, thank you so much to City Council for your efforts to protect trans youth in our state and for recognizing March 31st as Transgender Day of Visibility. We are grateful to stand alongside you in the ongoing fight for transgender justice and look forward to continued work together ensuring that every trans person, regardless of age, race, or circumstance, has access to a healthy, safe, and equitable life. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Micah, and thank you for being here. I appreciate it, and I know it even takes courage in this crazy world, so thank you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Here are none. I move for passage. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Ockower, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopted.
The final resolution I'm going to introduce is on the topic of Middle East peace. I know we've had a lot of guests, and I'm going to ask everyone to please be respectful during this portion of tonight's agenda. For months, Columbus City Council members engaged in dialogue with all corners of our community about the conflict in Gaza and Israel. We listened, and we welcomed perspectives from Jewish leaders, from Palestinian residents, from faith leaders across denominations, folks who feel we are living in a moment of conviction, and the vast majority of voices are calling for peace. I know some would have us to do nothing, but I must recognize the pain that our community is experiencing. This resolution is not adding to our community's division. It is not endangering our residents. Our community is already divided. Many of our residents are already afraid. So, let me be clear. Here is why I'm introducing this resolution today. First, it's the right thing to do. As a father and as a Christian, as a leader in this community who sees our residents in mourning, I look at what's happening abroad, and it is unacceptable. I'm comforted by Dr. King's words that "the time is always right to do what's right." Second, someday, there will be a tomorrow to this crisis, and when that tomorrow is here, this council will have to continue to be a convener, to work to bring people together, to be a place where all are welcome. So, even when times are hard, we must engage with our neighbors and step into the breach to find common ground. In this holy season of Lent and of Ramadan, and on the eve of Passover, our focus must be on peace, and that is the spirit in which this resolution is intended. Council will continue to be a friend to the Jewish community, a friend to the Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim community, and all communities here in Columbus who seek to enjoy the blessings of peace. Here is the text of the resolution before us. Whereas Columbus City Council defends the basic human rights of all people irrespective of national, racial, ethnic, religious, political, sexual orientation, gender identity, or other marginalized group affiliation, to enjoy the blessings of peace free from violence, intimidation, and harassment. And whereas we condemn Hamas's terrorist attack on Israel and hostage-taking of innocent civilians on October 7th. And whereas we condemn the ongoing humanitarian crises and the killing of Palestinian civilians in Gaza over the last five months of military warfare. And whereas council has heard from countless constituents in Columbus across diverse communities who are calling for peace, whose loved ones were killed in the worsening conflict, whose families are experiencing famine and devastation, and who have been personally threatened and fear violence. And whereas we stand united against antisemitism, Islamophobia, and anti-Palestinian and anti-Israeli bigotry. And whereas the conflict's continued escalation heightens the chances of larger regional conflict and threats of violence against our families right here in Columbus. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, Columbus City Council affirms its commitment to combat antisemitism, Islamophobia, anti-Palestinian, and anti-Israeli bigotry, and to unite our community in support of the right of all people to safely live, learn, work, play, and worship, as well as to gather, advocate, mourn, and celebrate in peace. And council calls for an immediate, sustained, and mutual end to the hostilities in Gaza and the release of hostages and detainees, and the urgent expansion of humanitarian assistance. And council also stands with the United States government in stressing international legal obligations to protect civilians, humanitarian workers, and medical personnel, condemning the taking of and killing of hostages, the murder of civilians, opposing additional resettlement and the forced displacement of civilians from Gaza, supporting efforts for the recovery and reconstruction of Gaza, and reiterating an unwavering commitment to the peace process. So, this evening, some folks have signed up to speak on this resolution. They will be permitted to do so, but at the end, we have two folks that we'd like to invite to come speak on this resolution this evening. First, we have Julie Tilson Stanley, the Executive Director of Jewish Columbus. Ms. Julie, welcome to council.
Good evening, Council President Harden and our esteemed City Council members. I'm standing with Liz Shafrin, Board Chair of Jewish Columbus, and Jonathan Feibel, Co-Chair of our Community Relations Council at Jewish Columbus. We want to thank all of you for the opportunity to address the resolution under consideration today. I want to emphasize that the Jewish community fervently supports peace. Again, I want to say, we support peace. We stand united in concern for the humanitarian crisis in Gaza and the innocent lives that are suffering. There is undoubtedly complex issues at hand, challenging the sum up of a single resolution. However, what's absent is the clarity regarding the role of Hamas in perpetrating this crisis. While the resolution references events from October 7th, it fails to acknowledge the significant exacerbation of the situation by Hamas. Our concern for Israel's security is paramount. The recent ceasefire broken on October 7th by Hamas was not an isolated incident. For over 15 years, Israeli citizens have endured relentless rocket attacks, living under constant fear. Israel has agreed to a ceasefire. It is now up to Hamas. Hamas's tactics are deplorable. They exploit human shields by hiding in residential areas, schools, hospitals, recklessly endangering their own people. Moreover, they obstruct humanitarian aid, depriving their citizens of vital assistance. Hamas has even resorted to executing those who dare to cooperate with Israel to provide security for aid convoys, as evidenced by the recent report, and their promise to do so on their own website. This nuanced understanding is missing from the resolution. Israel has repeatedly agreed to ceasefire agreements, only to face staunch resistance from Hamas. There is currently a negotiated ceasefire, which I mentioned above, where Israel has once again shown willingness to cease hostilities. The fighting could halt immediately if Hamas were to agree. While this resolution contains important elements, it's essential to recognize that simply calling for peace does not equate in achieving it. If one truly supports peace, there needs to be recognition that Hamas is the obstacle to both Israelis and Palestinians. Thank you for your attention to these pressing matters. We implore you to consider the full complexity of the situation as you deliberate on this resolution.
Thank you so much for being here. Thank you. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. I'm now going to call Mazen Razul to speak on this resolution. Mazen, welcome to council.
It's finally good to hear those opposing the ceasefire come out to City Council finally after five months, since we have never heard them before. Councilmembers, over the past five months, of an ongoing genocide committed by Israel against the Palestinian people, with an average of 250 Palestinians killed per day, with many more lives at risk from hunger, disease, and cold, a genocide that has broken every single record in modern history of the number of children dead, of journalists killed, of paramedics killed, of women killed, you finally come to a census to call for a ceasefire. According to the Oxford Dictionary, the term ceasefire means suspension of fighting, typically one during, it happens during peace talks. It has been universally accepted and used for people to stop fighting in any conflict anywhere around the world. Only in the case of Palestine will you find so much hesitation from officials to say the word ceasefire, as if the word ceasefire became so... Move on. A genocide found as plausible, a plausible case by the ICJ and the U.S. District Court, with over 40,000 Palestinians massacred and over 100,000 injured, in addition to those, in addition to all the other atrocities outlined before you in the past five months, are not simply hostilities. Reducing the genocide to the term hostilities is still dehumanizing and undermining our pain and suffering. The resolution introduced, although it includes many terms that are welcomed, that finally look at the Palestinian suffering as actual suffering, it still fails to recognize the brutality of this settler colonial state and its attempts to ethnically cleanse an entire nation. The resolution continues to attempt to equate between the occupied and the occupier, the oppressed and the oppressor, the victim and the aggressor. The resolution starts by October 7th, continues to act as if history started on that day, as if, as if, as if in the terms of Sherrod Brown and the speaker who spoke before me, there was a ceasefire on October 6th. This tells us an important thing, that you have not been listening closely to everything that we've been saying for the past six months. We have presented to you through all of our speakers all the injustices that have been occurring for over 100 years against Palestinians, starting with the shameful declaration of a white supremacist in 1917. The resolution unequivocally condemns Hamas, one actor, but fails to mention the Israel when addressing the Palestinians killed in the past six months, as if Roseanne's uncles were killed by lightning. as if Roseanne's uncles were killed by lightning or an earthquake. Council members, Palestinians have a right to freedom like any other nation. They have a right to self-determination like any other nation, and they have a right to live in dignity like any other nation. Your resolution is titled Resolution for Peace. You must acknowledge that justice is a prerequisite for peace, because the term peace without justice, the term peace without justice means to surrender to the status quo and to accept the continuation of the oppression of one people. So justice is the term that must be used, justice, not peace, justice, and peace comes after justice. Finally, Palestinians will survive this genocide. We will raise again in Gaza and all over the world, stronger than ever before. We will rebuild Gaza. We will heal together as a community and stand up again to continue our fight for justice and freedom. We will never forget, and we will never forgive. We will never forget, and we will never forgive. We will never forgive those who committed this genocide or those who were complicit in supporting them, arming them, or justifying their actions. As a Palestinian ambassador said, Palestinians may not be the greatest nation on earth, but no one, not a single person or nation, is greater than Palestinians, because we're all equal. We will not bow down, we will not bow down. Our struggle for liberation will continue, liberation of Palestinians and of Americans from the Zionist PAC influence. You will see us again at the city council. You will see us again at Franklin County to demand that divest, that they divest from bonds that support the continuation of the occupation apartheid regime. You will find us again at Joyce Bailey's offices and events, who just voted to stop funding of Honorwa, the only agency that could actually send aid to Palestinians. You will find us again to demonstrate against Sherrod Brown, who continues to dehumanize and undermine Palestinians in every single word he says. And you will find us again at Mayor Ginther's office, who refuses to even meet with our constituents, although he's been having numerous meetings with those who oppose a ceasefire, those who oppose stopping the killing of Palestinians. Thank you for your time, again. You'll see us again. I hope that this is a start, a start, a starting point for the city council and all other elected officials to start, to start humanizing Palestinians and end this ongoing campaign of dehumanization. We are humans, as equal as any one of you, and saying "free Palestine" is important. Seeing, saying the word ceasefire is important. Like we've said many times before, words really, really matter. And the term ceasefire, it's just unbelievable that this term is still not used by you. It's really surprising. However, we take your resolution as if you did call for a ceasefire, and hopefully you'll see us again. Free Palestine.
Can I have orders so that we can call for the resolution? We can call for the resolution or not? Clerk, please call the roll. Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Ockauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Resolution is adopted. We will continue... Are there any comments by our elected official? We are going to continue with our meeting now. Thank you. At this time, I request the following ordinances to be removed from...
It was unanimous.
Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Ockauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Finance and Governance Committee ordinance is 774-796-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 772-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 721-2024. Housing, Homelessness and Building Committee ordinance 733-2024. Health, Human Services and Equity Committee ordinances 655-656-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee ordinances 306 and 726-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee Resolution 51X-2024, and ordinances 648-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the first reading portion of the agenda, I don't believe that is your name, sir, but welcome back to council.
All right. I heard you're running for mayor.
You have three minutes to speak, sir.
You're running for mayor?
If this is not pertaining to...
No, it is. I was just, I just had it. You're running for mayor, all right. Councilwoman Barrosa de Padilla, Councilwoman Green, Councilman Weich, De Ockauer, you guys can sit this one out. Favor, I was going to put you on that list too, but you've got some signs to clean up. I don't want to bust you up for being a litter bug. So while I'm up here, right, like, one of my biggest beefs with you guys is, like, institutionally, when it comes to, like, building bike lanes or doing, like, transit or stuff, we start talking about, you know, like, we're going to the moon. There's got to be traffic studies. There's got to be public hearings. And, you know, I realize a lot of this starts at the top with the odious mayor suburbs, and it makes me regret that Mayor Coleman got caught, you know, banging that Chinese spy in his car on FBI wiretap. But when it comes to, like, the priorities of this council, it moves so quick when it comes to other things. Like, with the resolution, it's taken you guys five months, six months, to pass a lukewarm, tepid resolution that obviously didn't even satisfy our pro-Palestinian constituents. For what? For what? And now with this crime center, you know? I mean, God bless our first responders, but anytime they come up here with anything, any concern, they snap their fingers and you guys say, "How hot." And Remy, I know you get mad at me when I bang on you for being a Republican. You know, you're going to get up here and say you're a progressive Democrat, but I should have had this up. You know, I want to quote you, like, directly here, about this new real-time crime center, which is just some phrase that they made up, and you guys are going to go along with it. When someone, when somebody gets pulled over and they're, they're calling in a license plate, there will be crime analysts sitting in the real-time crime center poring through social media before the police officer even gets out of the car to let them know what type of person they're dealing with. That's a Republican quote, brother. There's no other way to put that. That's a Republican quote. And we're going to pay 19 suburbanites to come sit around an office in a neighborhood they don't even have the decency to live in or respect for one more surveillance tool that's going to be enforced against our poorest and our blackest residents? I mean, that, you know? I mean, just think about it when you're in your little signal chats and you're meeting in your backroom deals. It's just, you know, something to keep in mind. And also, lastly, I heard there's a little civil war brewing between you guys and the county commissioners. Now, one thing about me, I'm a lot better pissing inside the tent than on it. So if you guys have any dirt, you know, Kevin Boyce, I can smell the corruption on him, John O'Grady, and to a lesser extent, Eric Crowley, you know where to find me. Thank you. Good day.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions 62X and 66X-2024. Finance and Governance Committee ordinances 547, 585, 716, 784-2024. Economic Development and Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 725-2024. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinances 592, 593, 748, 750, 755, 756, 814-2024. Neighborhoods, Recreation and Parks Committee ordinances 400, 495, 496, 497, 559, 560, 601, and 848-2024. Workforce, Education, and Labor Committee ordinances 790 and 911-2024. Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee ordinances 658, 700, 730, 816, and 867-2024. Health, Human Services and Equity Committee ordinances 782 and 793-2024. Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee ordinance 764-2024. Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee ordinances 523, 524, 538, 544, 571, 577, 611, 652, 699, 734-2024. And in the Rules and Policy Committee, we have appointment from the mayor's office numbered A0083-2024.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel Thomas Wilkins, of a North resident for the last 15 years. I'm going to be speaking in. The ordinance number began with C82607002024. The property located at 2969 East 12th Avenue, holding the land bank. I believe I have a couple of questions here. This has been multiple times I've come to you, time after time after years. I want, there's five questions I want to know with this young man sitting back here. It seems like we have a lot of property sit through the land bank, a lot of them. And here we are again, talking about this property here. I want to know why do we have to go with demolition like this? I believe there's nothing wrong with this property, but today, I'm in opposition of this is because, right now, we have a vacant lot. And mind you, we all sit around the table and talk about affordable houses. Today, I just watched the city of Columbus behind my house. I stay on Arlington Avenue and find five trucks at this burnt property. I remind you, today, I'm standing here and going to be crying again to not give this land to Habitat Humanity. I propose to have a single-family dwelling on this lot for low-income people and multi-disability in senior population houses, and to multiple visually impaired blind. It's a shame to have this house sit like the city of Columbus years and decades. This could be renovated and be given up for rent for $275 a year, how long it sit. I'm asking for y'all to change the Cowherdy Land Bank to another entity with burnt structures and lapidated homes so vacant land can sit, idolized to be affordable for low-income rent in the state of Ohio and off to the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Would Department of Development please follow up, Mr. Wilkins, on this piece of legislation? It is a deed conveyance on one partial on 12th Avenue, but would you please give him more information on that? Are there other questions or comments on the consent portion of the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Ockauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Consent agenda is passed with a noted, is passed. We will now proceed with the second day, second reading of 30-day postponed emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee chaired by Councilman Bangston. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. First, up tonight in the Finance and Governance Committee for second reading, we have ordinance 0210-2024 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for automotive parts for the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of various previously established universal term contracts to authorize expenditure of $5,700,000 from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is a standard ordinance that is proceeded annually for the Fleet Management Division, which authorizes the division to purchase vehicle parts from a previously established universal term contract. The fleet needs access to new parts, funding as soon as possible to fulfill current needs, hence the emergency designation. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Ockauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, in the Finance and Governance Committee, we have ordinance 0462-2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a construction contract on behalf of Office of Construction Management with Cecily/M-M, a joint venture for the Department of Public Services, DODC Inspection Office Renovation Project, to authorize the appropriation expenditure up to $4,206,000 with private construction, with the private construction inception fund and the construction inception fund. Public Services Division of Design and Construction Inspections Office is adding 6,000 square feet to its existing facility located at 1800 East 17th Avenue. The work of this expansion includes the addition of 19 new offices, three conferences, three conference and workrooms, restrooms, a courtyard, and other office amenities. The lowest, best, most responsive and responsible bid was from Cecily/M-M, a joint venture. It is important also to note that this joint venture is also certified as an MBE, which allows the city to surpass its 20% minority participation goal on the project. Again, if anyone has been out there to that facility, know that it is well overdue for expansion, and they are workers that do some of our most critical work. And so really excited to see that we are investing in this space to ensure that our employees are able to perform their job in, with dignity. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Ockauer, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
All right. And Council President, I move to the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee.
Please.
We do have one ordinance for second read, and I was, you know, as chair, happy to sponsor this, but really more excited to have this co-sponsored by the entire Women's Caucus. So I want to kick it over to my vice chair of the Economic Development and Small Minority Business Committee, Councilmember Laura D. Barrosa de Padilla, to read and pass this next piece of legislation.
Thank you, Chair Bangston. Ordinance 0847-2024 to authorize the Director of the Office of Diversity and Inclusion to enter into a grant agreement with the Women's Center for Economic Opportunity in support of their Advancing Innovation Momentum Bootcamp Program to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Job Growth Sub-Fund and to declare an emergency. Founded in 2013, the Women's Center for Economic Opportunity, or WCEO, advances racial, gender, and economic equality or equity by facilitating successful access to capital and connections for African-American women and women of color. This ordinance provides $50,000 in funding to support the Advancing Innovation Momentum Bootcamp, a new program being done in partnership with our Office of Diversity and Inclusion. At a very high level, the program will empower and equip aspiring entrepreneurs with the knowledge and skills needed to move into and create viable businesses in emerging and establish high-growth sectors. With us virtually tonight to speak to the importance of this initiative is the... With us virtually tonight to speak to the importance of this initiative is the founder and CEO of WCEO, Kena Smith. Kena, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, we can hear you, Kena. You can, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla and Councilmember Bangston. Council President Harden and members of council, I am Kena Smith. I'm the founder and CEO of the Women's Center for Economic Opportunity. We are a nonprofit business accelerator for women of color and a research and data repository on the economic status of local minority, minority women, and women-owned businesses. Our newest, newest report, Advancing Entrepreneurial Mobility and Economic Impact Analysis of Black-Owned Businesses in Central Ohio, reveals not only the economic contributions of black business ownership to the local economy, it discusses how the industries where black business owners have access to the resources needed to start and grow businesses are in lower-growth industries that support solopreneurs in greater numbers than employer businesses. And this is important because it's in employer businesses that we see gains in reducing the, the wealth gap, the racial wealth gap. Local higher-growth industries such as business-to-business suppliers, light manufacturing, and technology-enabled businesses, these are businesses that spur job creation and generational wealth, and these opportunities are often walled off by higher startup capital requirements, financial and social, lack of access to defined pathways, and geographical distance from technical expertise. The report also brings to light that business creation among African-American women in Central Ohio actually may lag national trends. And as Women's History Month winds down, it's important to highlight this data and the need for greater investment in women of color entrepreneurs. Helping minority women grow more strong, healthy businesses has an economic mobility ripple effect. It results in outcomes like helping children flourish, creating more neighborhood-level jobs that reduce unemployment rates for adults and teens, as well as contributing to regional prosperity that benefits all Central Ohio residents. We will use the data to recalibrate our approach to entrepreneurial support and education aimed at growing scalable minority businesses and reducing utilization disparities. Our work with Director Jenkins in the Office of Diversity and Inclusion will pilot a series of bootcamps for its supplier base that serve founders and their teams with exposure to higher-growth industry and contracting pathways, supportive expertise, mentorship, and opportunities for investment. The program will help founders upskill to expand marketing strategies and better prepare for contracts and capital readiness. Thank you to Councilmember Bangston and his staff, and members of the council Women's Caucus, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, Councilwoman Favor, Councilwoman De Alcawar, and Councilwoman Green, as well as Director Jenkins. We are grateful for the opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kena, and thank you for founding this program. I mean, I think this was by design that we are passing this during Women's History Month. I think that you, and you mentioned this, I think women are some of the highest grow, or in terms of entrepreneurs, some of the fastest-growing sector of entrepreneurs in our communities. I think especially for people of color, you know, immigrants, migrants, refugees. I think when we see barriers, we remove them by ourselves, putting ourselves in the driver's seat, right? And making that side hustle that we have our main hustle. And so providing women with the opportunity and the skills that they need so that they can advance themselves means that we are also advancing communities, because an investment in women is always, an investment in families is always an investment in communities. And so I want to thank you for all of the work that you do to support women, support women entrepreneurs. I want to open it up for my colleagues, if you have any questions or comments. Anything? Director Jenkins, is there anything you would like to add?
We're just looking forward, we're looking forward to this opportunity to work with Kena and WCEO, and also looking to see what projects we can do in the city with this group. So, very excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Chair Bangston, for supporting this effort during Women's History Month. I'm excited to make history together. So with that, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcawar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, and I will give the floor back to Chair Bangston.
That's all we have in our committees this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before counsel is the Public Service and Transportation Committee, chaired by Councilman Barosa de Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. I have one ordinance this evening in Public Service and Transportation, that's the ordinance 0758 2024 to authorize the city attorney on behalf of the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a settlement agreement with Nicholas M. Savco Inc. Inc. Incorporated for an extended pavement maintenance security period and related terms involving the villages at Shannon Green, Section 1, Parts 1 and 2. So this is a settlement agreement, and for that, I want to give the floor over to City Attorney Shin, if you could give us a brief overview of the settlement.
Yes, thank you, Chair Barosa de Padilla, President Harden, and members of council. The roller compacted concrete pavement at issue here was installed in September 2019. Core samples were checked by DPS engineers in September and October 2019. These core samples were found not to be in compliance with the city's construction and materials specifications in effect at the time. We worked with Savco, and instead of going to court or having them redo it, we worked out an agreement in which, excuse me, the parties agreed that the normal one-year guarantee on the pavement would be extended for 10 years from the date of the installation. This extended guarantee now will run through September 2029. And the city attorney believes that this settlement is in the best interest of the city of Columbus and provides additional guarantees, of course, than what is normally provided. And I would be happy to answer any questions, councilmember.
So for my colleagues, the reason that, part of the reason, and you can correct me, that we brought this to counsel today is that usually there's a $20,000 minimum for a settlement agreement to be brought to counsel. This is an interesting settlement in that at this time, there is no actual exchange of funds, but what this is, is agreeing that we are moving beyond the terms of the contract from one year of a guarantee that the contractor would go back in to a 10-year, so from 2019 to 2029, and that we are, the DPS has given us a projection, knowing that the rate of the cost of materials increases, that it could be up to $125,000 should the 50 to 100 feet of pavement fail according to our guidelines, that then the contractor would go in and they would replace it. So it's a little bit different than normal settlements where we would, there would be an exchange of money. This is an agreement for 10 years and up to $125,000. Did I get that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. So do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Thank you. Working on that law degree. Just kidding. If I have no questions from my colleagues, Director, nothing to add, correct? Great, then I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcawar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all for me this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before counsel is the Neighbors Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember De Alcawar. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. First in this committee, we have ordinance 0413 dash 2024 to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Gerd Johns Incorporated in an amount of $22,045 to provide public art appraisal services, to waive the competitive bidding requirements, so the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $22,045 from the Department of Development's 2024 general fund budget, and to authorize payments for services starting March 1st, 2024. As we ramp up our conversations around public art in the city, it's important to take stock of the current inventory of art owned by the city. Last year, the Department of Development contracted with Gerd Johns to have our nine most endangered art pieces appraised for insurance purposes. The city now would like to appraise the city's other 67 pieces of public art, and is requesting a bid waiver so that they may utilize Gerd Johns appraisal services again for consistency. Deputy Director Harris, do you have anything you would like to add to this ordinance?
Thank you, Councilmember De Alcawar. The only thing I would like to add is, we feel as a self-insurer that it's in the best interest of the city to make sure that we know the value of our public art pieces throughout the city, and this is our attempt to make sure that we're responsible and know so. Thank you.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? If there are no further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcawar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0613 dash 2024 to authorize the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department to approve five current city parklands to be named and designated as City of Columbus Nature Preserves. And to talk more about this exciting work, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague and vice-chair of this committee, Councilmember Weich.
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate that. Since we got a chance to kind of celebrate the conservation team, it only made sense to do this designation on the same day. The new designations are Coronet Woods, Island View, Warner Wood, Woodstreams, and Overbrook Ravine. The new improvements to the nature preserves will include preserve, restoration, trail creation and maintenance, that includes removing invasive species and increasing connectivity. Under this ordinance, we'll be protecting over 200 acres of city land. This is all made possible through additional funding secured by this council through budget negotiations. I want to thank my colleagues for supporting this effort and prioritizing conservation. Let me stop there, see if any questions or comments from my colleagues. Hearing and seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcawar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair.
Passed.
That's all for my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Is there a motion to recess for zoning?
So moved.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcawar, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
We are in recess. Meeting number 17. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to spin for the reading of the Journal? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Are there any additions or corrections to the Journal? Hearing none, the Journal was approved. We will now go to the zoning committee. President Protim Doran chairs that committee. All members serve on it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Before we begin tonight's zoning agenda, first a little bit of housekeeping. Will the clerk please read the numbers of legislators in the zoning committee this evening that require a waiver of second reading?
Actually, my apologies, we don't have to do that this evening. Our apologies, sir.
Thank you, clerk. Now allow me to briefly explain our rules pertaining to speaking before council on rezonings and variances. We only receive staff presentation for ordinance that have a disapproval from a recommending body, or if you have a public speaker signed to speak against an ordinance. We allow three speakers in favor and three speakers against any ordinance. If someone who signed up to speak is not present, the next person on the list will fill that slot. All speakers in council variances, including city staff, area commission applicants, and members of the public, will be required to be sworn in before they give testimony. Representatives of the area commission applicants are always able to speak on an ordinance and do not need to fill out a speaker slip. This evening, we did not receive any public speaker slips for the legislation we have before us tonight. On the advice of the city attorney's office, I will now swear in city staff, please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Shall I be the truth, nothing but the truth, as you shall answer in pains of penalty or perjury? So please say I do.
I do.
Thank you. Moving into the agenda, we have first ordinance 0769-2024 to grant variance provisions of section 3332.039 R4 residential district and 3312.49 required parking in the Columbus City Code, so property located at 1450 Ellsworth Avenue to allow type A home daycare facility to produce parking in the R4 residential district. The site consists of a single unit dwelling in the R4 residential district. The requested council variance will allow the existing dwelling to be used as a type A home daycare facility, which the current R4 district does not allow. The proposal has approvals from city staff and the Columbus South Side Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Thank you. Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0771-2024 to grant variance provisions of section 3332.035 R3 residential district, 3312.49 required parking, and 3332.05A4 area district lot with requirements, 3332.13R3 area district requirements, 3332.21 building line, 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbus City Code, so property located at 277 South Monroe Avenue to allow two single unit dwellings on one lot in the R3 residential district. The site is developed with a single unit dwelling and a rear detached garage in the R3 residential district. The requested council variance will allow for the construction of a single unit dwelling above the existing detached garage, also known as a carriage house. A council variance is required because the R3 district only allows a single unit dwelling per lot as residential use. The proposal has approvals from city staff and the Near East Area Commission. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to accept the entire staff report into evidence as an exhibit.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Accept it.
Next, I move to adopt the findings of staff as the findings of council.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Adopt it.
And finally, move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, Council President. That's all we have for tonight's zoning agenda.
My man. Is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene regular meeting in five minutes. Meeting number 17. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, De Alcower, Doran's Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to hop out of order very quickly to go to the safety committee in which Council member Remy chairs to read one ordinance, and then we will go back to regular order. Councilmember Remy, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Council President. I wanted to make sure that our guests get on their way this evening, and thank you for being patient. But tonight, I have ordinance 818-2024 to authorize the city attorney to enter into two contracts with Lindsay Automotive, Inc. and Mr. Transmission Mylex Complete Auto Care for the purpose of supporting and expanding the Project Taillight Public Safety and Crime Prevention Program, to waive competitive bidding for the Lindsay Automotive, Inc. contract, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $500,000 within the Public Safety Initiative sub fund, and to declare an emergency. I'm going to ask a few guests to come to the podium to speak about Project Taillight and the impact this critical program has on our residents today. So if I could, have our monitor underwood, Charnell Bennett, Ian Andrews, Associate Professor of Automotive Technology, Columbus State, Matt Boily, owner-operator of Mr. Transmission, come to the podium. I would certainly appreciate it. Thank you so much for coming down tonight and sharing more about your experience. But just to offer a few pieces of information on this particular program, we are super excited to really increase the funding for this program. It's really been nothing short of remarkable for so many people. Over the course of the last several years, we have helped over 300 participants. And last year, I helped to fund from June 1st to September 30th, a true period of trial period, I suppose you'd say, and we had 77 eligible referrals, 66 were completed, but 80% of them were single mothers. That allows them to get to, you know, medical care, gets to childcare, get to their place of employment. And so we're super excited to take this program and expand it even further. And so I couldn't think of a better way to really tell the story than to have all you all speak this evening. So I will go ahead and turn the floor over to you.
Sure. Thank you, everyone, for inviting me out to this meeting today. My name is Ian Andrews. I'm an Associate Professor of Automotive Technology at Columbus State Community College, and I've been serving as the faculty advisor on Project Taillight ever since the pilot started back in 2020. And the original aim of that pilot was to repair things that could affect the vehicle's visibility, like headlights, taillights, marker lamps, wiper blades, and things like that, that could ultimately affect the visibility of the driver, motorists, pedestrians, things like that around that vehicle. And the aim of making roadway safer, right? So it's kind of public safety. But as we started to do those repairs, and we put our students on those repairs, and we were inspecting those vehicles, it was really notable early on that that was just scratching the surface, really, for those motorists and their cars. We were discovering a lot of things that I would say would make that vehicle not safe or reliable, or I wouldn't feel comfortable putting my own children in, speaking of the mothers that we interacted with. So we knew that we had to do something, essentially, and we kind of engaged some of our partners in the attorney's office and things like that to make it bigger, better, faster, stronger in a lot of ways. And that's really what this is going to help us do, right? Expanding that budget and expanding people's access to those repairs is really everything. I've lived in Columbus all my life, and I know enough about it to know that for most of our residents, this is a commuter town, right? Columbus has everything you need. It's just a short drive away, right? And for those that don't have access to transportation, depending on what the Ohio weather is up to that day, it's a long walk away, and we encounter that with a lot of our students at the same time. So that reliable and safe transportation that we're aiming for is really everything to these participants. It's their livelihood, it's their support structure, it's their friends and family and having access to that. So in a small way, I like to think that this is definitely helping our friends, family, neighbors, and things like that in the community. So I'm really appreciative and thankful that we've extended that budget out and we get to grow this and make it bigger, better, faster, stronger. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Matt Boily with Mylex Complete Auto Care, Mr. Transmission here in Columbus, Ohio. We are a service provider for the Project Taillight program, which stands as a beacon of the community's support and engagement towards ensuring the safety and well-being of every resident in our city. This automotive repair outreach program meticulously focuses on servicing vehicles for the less fortunate, emphasizing the critical importance of safety features that protect not just the vehicle owners, but their families and every one of us who shares the road with them. Having personally witnessed the profound effect of this program, I can attest to the immediate and tangible benefits it provides. For many recipients, Project Taillight has been nothing short of a lifeline, transforming their vehicles from a potential hazardous into safe, reliable means of transportation. The peace of mind that comes with knowing your car is safe and is drive-to-drive is invaluable, particularly for those who rely on their vehicles essentially for daily tasks such as commuting to work, taking children to school, or attending medical appointments. Councilperson Remy's visionary investment in Project Taillight is a testament to deep commitment to the safety and welfare of our community. This program not only addresses the immediate needs of the vehicle's safety, but also fosters a sense of community solidarity and support. It sends a powerful message that in Columbus, no one is left behind, and every resident's safety is a priority. In conclusion, the impact of Project Taillight extends far beyond the individuals it directly assists. It contributes to the overall safety and harmony of our community, making Columbus a model for other cities to follow. It is through such collective efforts that we can build a safer, more inclusive Columbus for all. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share this remarkable story, Project Taillight, with you. Together, let's drive towards a brighter future for everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to say one favor.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
I'm in the background, I'm Matt's wife, but I have seen this impact to talk with those participants that are getting this service. And you don't get to see that. We welcome you to come and see it sometime, because they come to my husband, to our technicians, and can't express so much the thankfulness of helping them make their car safe and give them some reliable transportation. And it's heartwarming to us. We wanted to do something for the community, and to be given this opportunity to do this means a lot to us, and we hope to continue this relationship.
Thank you so much. And I know you guys are off on Morse Road, and, you know, in my neighborhood, right around the corner. But I know that you took upon yourselves, you said that you wanted to get back to the community, and this was an opportunity that you saw, and it's been, from what I've understood, more than rewarding for you to do so, and we appreciate that completely. But unfortunately, the two people that were recipients this evening had to leave because of the length of the meeting. And so, but, you know, again, the impact that this is showing every single day, especially to single mothers, is really important. It's the right thing to do. And as we started this program, it was, look at all the, you know, especially with COVID, we saw so many cars that were sitting on the side of the road, and they were parked, and communities were concerned. And a lot of times, that's just because people can't afford to get their cars repaired. And so this program is a beacon of light, you know, to help bring that forward. And so I'm super excited to increase the funding, super excited that you guys are involved, and thank you for your participation in this. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? Go ahead.
I'd like to offer a comment. Since we don't have recipients here, I was a single parent, and I remembered my old beater nineteen seventy-two Dotson twelve hundred, and when that transmission went out, and I had to rack up an incredible amount of debt. This would have been a blessing to me. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, sometimes the people in the background play the most important role. So thank you for sharing that today, and thank you for reaching out to the folks who are coming in. Thank you for raising your hand and saying that you wanted to be part of this. I think that, you know, all of us up here, we were raised by single moms. No single moms are related. You were a single mom. So I think that, you know, until, I mean, this is why we're trying to make a transportation system that works for our city, but we know it's not. Until we get there, right, this is folks' main mode of transportation. And so removing those barriers for them, and we said this earlier, an investment in women is an investment in families, and this is just a testament to how true that is. So thank you, and thank you for the work that you're doing, and thank you for reaching out to those moms and having that conversation, especially when they're there in that space, because that's just as important as the work that's being done on their cars as well.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Yeah, I mean, I always, it's been so long since I was a kid, but I was raised by a single mother as well, and I know what it was like, you know, to have to rely on transportation. So thank you so much, everyone. And with that, I move for passage.
Is there a second? Clark, please call the row. Thank you, sir.
Bangston, Burrows, De Padilla, De Al, Coward, Dorance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you so much, Council President. We'll get back to this later.
Yes, sir. Next committee to come in for council is the Housing, Homelessness, and Building Committee, chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight in Housing, Homelessness, and Building, we have ordinance zero seven three five dash twenty twenty four to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to two million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of home investment partnership program funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizes the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a commitment letter, loan agreement, promissory note, mortgage, and restrictive covenant with Berwin East Place Senior Housing Limited Partnership in an amount up to two million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the Berwin East project. The total city funding of the project is two million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Of this amount, two million one hundred and seventy-five thousand is found within this ordinance and establishes Home ARP funding for the Berwin East Place. A subsequent ordinance will be put forth to City Council in an amount up to four hundred thousand dollars for the remaining Home ARP funding to provide supportive services for residents at this location over four years. National Church Residences is the developer of Berwin East Place. Berwin East Place will be an innovative, new triple-blend service-enriched supportive housing model, whereby rental subsidy, care coordination, as well as health and wellness services, will be offered to the low-income senior residents. This supportive housing model will in part target older adults having experienced long-term homelessness with a concurrent disabling condition in the form of advanced geriatric conditions. This program is intended to provide housing stability while also empowering residents to better manage chronic conditions, lessen reliance upon, and divert usage of emergency medical services, institutional care, and even avoid premature death. Berwin Place will contain a total of eighty-eight units. The proposed site for the senior housing community is thirty-three forty-one East Livingston Avenue, located near the intersection of Barnett Road and East Livingston Avenue. The site is located in close proximity to neighborhood services, shopping, public transportation, and healthcare services. This legislation represents appropriation for a part of the Home ARP allocation plan, portion of the city's twenty twenty-one HUD annual action plan, which was amended per ordinance zero four five nine dash twenty twenty-three. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clark, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrows, De Padilla, De Al, Coward, Dorance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance zero seven three six dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to two million one hundred and seventy-five thousand of home investment partnership funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a commitment letter, loan agreement, promissory note, mortgage, and restrictive covenant with Berwin East Place Senior Housing Limited Partnership in an amount up to two million one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This ordinance authorizes the appropriation and expenditure of up to one million fifty thousand dollars of grant funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through the Home Investment Partnerships Program American Rescue Plan, and authorizes the Director of Development to execute a commitment letter, loan agreement, promissory note, mortgage, and restrictive covenant with Touchstone Field Place Two LLC for the Touchstone Field Place Two project. In twenty twenty-one, the city authorized five hundred thousand dollars of home funds for Touchstone Field Place One, the first phase of this project. This initial phase has been completed and is one hundred percent occupied. For the second phase, the city will provide one million five hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars in funding, with one million fifty thousand dollars of this amount being appropriated by this ordinance through Home ARP dollars. A subsequent ordinance will be put forth to City Council in an amount up to five hundred and two thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars for the remaining Home ARP funding of this project to provide supportive services for residents at this location over the course of four years. Touchstone Field Place Two will provide forty-four one-bedroom units of permanent supportive housing prioritized for individuals who meet the state of Ohio's permanent supportive housing policy framework, with all of the units being one-bedroom, one-bath, garden-style apartments. Of the forty-four units, the city's contribution to Phase Two of this project will fund six units. Specifically, all forty-four units will prioritize individuals who meet the HUD definition of chronic homelessness. The property will be located at twenty-five sixty-five Lockborn Road on the south side of Columbus. These units will be made available to individuals who are currently residing at forty West Long Street and have met the USHS standards for referral to permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is housing with linkages to services that help residents successfully maintain housing and rebuild their lives. The target population for Touchstone Field Place Two will be men and women who are homeless or at risk of homelessness and are disabled by mental illness, substance addiction, dual diagnosis, and/or physical disability. Residents will also be referred to other agencies for medical, dental, health needs, material needs, legal assistance, and other needs. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Madam Chair, is there an amendment?
Oh, yes. Yes, I apologize for that. Last week, there was an article on NBC for Columbus's housing stock and referencing a report that found that Columbus's stock of available affordable housing has shrunk to its lowest levels in five years. Unfortunately, this is what many folks have predicted, and that is why the city has been working on addressing this over the last few years. Deputy Director Harris, tonight, we see that one hundred and thirty-two units and an investment of four point three million in the city's Home ARP funding. Can you share just a little bit more about the city's plan to address the housing crisis, and specifically, affordable housing?
Sorry. Thank you, Chair Favors. Good evening, President Harden, President Protem Dorance, members of council. So in addition to these two ordinance, so in secondary, ordinance zero seven three zero twenty twenty-four appeared on tonight's consent agenda and committed to support the creation of one hundred and twenty-one two- and three-bedroom family units for individuals between thirty and eighty percent AMI, with an average of fifty-five percent AMI. The city is committing to support the NCJC Housing and Development Foundation's downtown campus project with three million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand from the Affordable Housing Bonds. That monetary support will be legislated at a future council meeting once the capital funds are available. Tonight's housing development agreement outlines the city's commitment and allows the project to move forward. Moreover, these three housing ordinance that development has brought forward this evening will support the creation of two hundred and fifty-two new housing units representing seniors, families, and permanent supportive housing in a total of more than seven million of city funding commitments utilizing Home ARP and Affordable Housing Bonds. The housing projects on tonight's agendas represent a spectrum, a sample of the spectrum of housing that is outlined in the city's housing strategy that is needed throughout the city to help tackle the housing and crisis in our community. Regarding the ordinance zero nine three zero, earlier this year, the state of Ohio launched the Ohio Single Family Tax Credit Program, offering gap financing to develop or substantially rehabilitate housing in Ohio for homeownership. The program offers up to fifty thousand dollars in Ohio tax credits per unit, and the homes are sold to qualifying households at or below one hundred and twenty percent AMI, whom will commit to reside in the home as their primary residence for ten years. The program requires that the project development owner be a municipal unit of government, although the municipal unit of government may designate another party as the lead applicant and designate a reporter. Beginning in two thousand and six, Homeport and the city of Columbus committed to the redevelopment of the American Edition neighborhood, establishing a long-term relationship with residents and interested community stakeholders. As a result, the city has invested in infrastructure, including the upgrading of stormwater systems, new roads, and sidewalks. Also, thirty-nine new homes have been constructed utilizing NSP Home and City Bond Funds. For the next phase of the development, the city of Columbus and Homeport would like to apply to the Single Family Tax Credit Program in order to construct twenty-four additional homes in the neighborhood. The ordinance will authorize the Director of Development to submit the Single Family Tax Credit application to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency and to designate the Columbus Housing Partnership DBA Homeport as the lead applicant and designate a reporter. The deadline for submission for the twenty twenty-four competitive funding round is April fifth. We appreciate your consideration of the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, Council President.
No, no, no.
Okay.
I'm following your lead.
Are there any questions or comments for the department?
Well, I think, you know, as it relates to the reporting on Columbus's housing stock, I think it's incredibly important for us to continue to acknowledge efforts that are being made to address our shortage here. In reality, we are dealing with supply and demand, and we will continue to be on the wrong side as long as the demand outpaces the supply. And so President Protem Dorance is doing amazing work around our zoning and re-zoning our zoning code. The council has been very intentional about addressing tenant protections and ensuring that what is already being designated as affordable can remain affordable to help stave off our evictions and homelessness crisis. Tonight's pieces of legislation under consideration address some of the most hardest constituents to house, those being our homeless population and those who require permanent supportive housing. And so, you know, I acknowledge the work the department is doing, but we do have to continue to incentivize development across all income spectrums. But tonight, I am very proud to sponsor these pieces of legislation that focus on two of our hardest populations to house. With that, I move for passage.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, I'm just getting this one all wrong. First, can I move to amend?
The legislation has submitted?
Yep. Clark, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrows, De Padilla, De Al, Coward, Dorance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden.
Amended.
Thank you. And now I move for passage.
Clark, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrows, De Padilla, De Al, Coward, Dorance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Just too excited to get some more housing done. Next, we have ordinance zero seven four nine dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to establish contracts with various contractors for the maintenance of properties maintained by the Division of Land Redevelopment, to waive competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, to allow expenditures prior to the establishment of purchase orders, to authorize the expenditure of three hundred and forty thousand dollars from land management fund, and to declare an emergency. The Department of Development advertised an RFQ through the vendor services portal on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, and accepted proposals for property and lawn maintenance services. A total of nineteen responses were received. A total of thirteen contractors were selected by an evaluation committee. Last week, council passed ordinance zero six eight one dash twenty twenty-four to move forward with awarding ten contractors for a total of fourteen contracts to provide services, including trash and debris removal from structures, cleaning and abatement of vacant lots, lawn mowing, tree services, brush cleaning, trash pickup, and similar work. Since then, the three remaining vendors have updated their vendor counts, allowing the Department of Development to award those contractors for establishing four contracts. The new prices will require an additional appropriation to the current budget, as authorized by ordinance thirty-three forty-four dash twenty twenty-three. Current property maintenance contracts expire at the end of February. This legislation will also allow the payment of services on an emergency basis between the expiration of current contracts and the establishment of new purchase orders. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clark, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrows, De Padilla, De Al, Coward, Dorance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And last but certainly not least, we have ordinance zero nine three zero dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to submit the Single Family Tax Credit application as project development owner to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency, to authorize the Department of Development to designate Columbus Housing Partnership Incorporated as Homeport on the development team as the lead applicant and designated reporter, and to declare an emergency. The Single Family Tax Credit Program leverages public-private partnerships to increase the inventory of affordable, single-family housing for Ohio's growing workforce. Proposed projects may receive up to fifty thousand dollars in tax credits per dwelling. The tax credits may be claimed upon completion of the project. Each dwelling in a development project must be sold to a qualified buyer who will use it as their primary residence. The sale price of the house must be affordable, no more than thirty percent of the qualified buyer's monthly income. Additionally, each dwelling in the project must remain affordable for ten years after the initial sale. This ordinance will grant authority to the Director of the Department of Development to be the project development owner for a twenty-four-unit, single-family homeownership project in American Edition. Per the Ohio Housing Finance Guidelines, as the PDO, this legislation will also give the Director of Development the authority to designate another member of the development team as the lead applicant and designated reporter by providing sufficient proof that the PDO has approved such designee. The city of Columbus and Homeport have a longstanding relationship with the community of American Edition, where local and federal funds have been invested in infrastructure such as roads, sewer, and water, and in the development of new, single-family home. This new funding will allow the continuation of the project with the development of twenty-four new units. The city is working with Homeport to integrate net-zero elements into the design of the homes, thus lowering the energy costs for buyers. Any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clark, please call the row.
Bangston, Burrows, De Padilla, De Al, Coward, Dorance, Faber, Green, Remy, Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come in for council is the Health and Human Services and Equity Committee, chaired by Councilmember Green. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. Tonight in the Health, Human Services, and Equity Committee, we have two ordinances that are on second reading. The first is ordinance zero seven nine two dash twenty twenty-four to authorize the Board of Health to accept a reproductive health and wellness program grant from the Ohio Department of Health to authorize the appropriation of one million seven hundred thousand dollars in grant money and fee revenues from the unappropriat- in grant money and fee revenues from the unappropriated violence of the Health Department Grants Fund to authorize the expenditure of said grant fund and to declare an emergency. The Reproductive Health and Wellness Program at Columbus Public Health is a nationally-recognized family planning program that offers comprehensive reproductive health services in accordance with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, providing quality family planning guidelines. This funding supports the Women's Health and Sexual Health and Wellness Centers at Columbus Public Health. The Sexual Health Clinic provides immediate access to critical sexual health services to any Columbus residents, but also specializes in culturally competent care for underserved populations like our teen, our minority communities, and residents living with substance use disorder, returning from incarceration, or those who are experiencing homelessness. Services are provided to any Columbus residents, and fees are based on the sliding fee scale following an assessment of household size and income, making sure that these services are accessible to anyone regardless of their ability to pay. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, and our second ordinance on the agenda tonight is ordinance zero-eight-four-six dash twenty-twenty-four to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with the National Association of Social Workers in support of their navigating new laws curriculum, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the job growth subfund, and to declare an emergency. As we talked about already tonight, with the passage of House Bill sixty-eight and the proposed changes in healthcare regulations within the Ohio Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services and the Ohio Department of Health that impact access to gender-affirming care services, our behavioral healthcare providers across Ohio have been thrust into a state of uncertainty. Members of our LGBTQIA+ community feel a lack of safety seeking these critical mental health services, and likewise, providers are seeking clarity on how to, on understanding and how to navigate these new regulations and how they might impact their ability to provide unbiased, holistic, and person-centered behavioral healthcare to our transgender, non-binary, and gender expansive communities. Regardless of these complexities, I want to be very clear that gender-affirming, mental and behavioral healthcare is still legal in the state of Ohio, and we are committed to ensuring that first and foremost, all people, including our transgender and gender-diverse youth, can feel safe and comfortable seeking these critical life-saving services, as well as that our clinicians across the state of Ohio have the tools and the information they need to deliver these life-saving services in compliance with the new regulatory landscape without fear of risking their licensure or livelihood. Today, Columbus City Council is proud to partner with the National Association of Social Workers Ohio Chapter to deliver this critical training during this time of uncertainty. NASW Ohio is a statewide leader in advocacy and practice support for social workers and is well-positioned to offer training and behavioral health, to behavioral healthcare workers on these subjects. This funding will allow NASW Ohio to implement training and equip providers with the clinical and technical skills needed to support the critical mental health needs of our transgender and gender expansive youth amidst the new landscape of anti-gender-affirming care laws. The program is off to a great start. Since they launched their initial pilot, the first online training had over four hundred registrations with over two hundred live participants, and NASW Ohio's goal is to train all forty thousand-plus licensed behavioral healthcare workers in Ohio to navigate these new laws. Are there any comments or questions to my colleagues? And I also would like to maybe offer Council President, who is co-sponsoring this request with me, an opportunity to speak.
No, I would just thank you for your leadership on this, and it was important to us, to this body, that as we pass the resolution this evening, that, one, it's important to do the ceremonial in acknowledging and making sure that we, as a community, recognize and celebrate trans visibility. But it's also, it was important for us as a body to actually do something. Since last year, when we passed the resolution, our State House has just gone an all-out assault on specifically trans youth, which I find just insane, our children. And so, this is a step in us taking meaningful action to support the folks who support our young people. So, again, thank you for your leadership on this and look forward to passing.
Did anyone else have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Criminal Justice Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Council President. Tonight in Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I have a plethora of pieces of legislation. The first five are liquor objection withdrawal resolutions. I'm going to ask Sarah Palmeroy, the Assistant City Attorney, to explain why we have to pass liquor objection withdrawals annually and to briefly cover each of the individual cases and why the city is asking to withdraw our prior objections to them this evening. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn the floor over to you, Assistant City Attorney Palmeroy.
Thank you so much, Chair Remy, Council President Harden, appreciate you all for having me here tonight. I'm here tonight with my colleague Sophie Yano as part of our normal process that we, you know, we enact throughout the year in terms of our dealings with liquor establishments. We were here in the fall to present objections based on various types of criteria. Primarily, we're looking at violent crime, drug overdoses, prostitution, and liquor violations. Those are the categories of items that might present an objection or make a place ripe for a nuisance lawsuit and objection. We're here tonight because we've worked with a number of businesses to actually bring them under nuisance abatement orders that are now filed with the Franklin County Environmental Court. But we also have a handful that have either changed ownership or are in the process of transferring such the location will no longer operate. Effectively, the same result, whether or not we went forward with the objection and succeeded, or the place closed down. And so, we are required by law to withdraw any objection that we present before you all, and by agreement on a handful of those, we have said in exchange for the agreement to either move the permit elsewhere or to be under one of these orders, we will then withdraw our liquor objection. I'll obviously take questions about this part of the process, but I think at base, it highlights how our office is constantly working with businesses, working with community organizations, to come up with the best solution for a location. Sometimes it's closure, sometimes it's a safety agreement, sometimes it's a period of both. So, to briefly go into the objections that we have tonight, we have six. The first is for Beechcroft New Stand, which is up off of East Dublin-Granville Road. That is actually one location as part of a larger case that we actually have against an entire strip there, and we are close to a global agreement for that whole strip with the real property owners, but we already have an agreement in place with the operator of that location, and it is, in fact, a new operator compared to the folks that were running it when we had all of the instances of issues that brought up before you all. As far as the next one, Jack's Corner Pub, obviously the scene of a horrible homicide just about a year ago. That location has been closed down since we filed a nuisance abatement lawsuit at that time. This agreement to withdraw the objection is part of a global agreement for this permit to no longer be in operation here and for it to be transferred in terms of ownership. So this individual will not have this permit. It is currently in safekeeping, which is a formal term for effectively keeping the permit with the Division of Liquor Control. So that is all part of this agreement. But at base, Jack's Corner Pub is not reopening just because we are withdrawing this objection here. As far as I Love High LLC, that is the Julep liquor permit. Julep was actually evicted from their location in the short north. This is an objection actually dating back to twenty-twenty-two, again, partially as a result of a major violent incident involving a security guard there. But either way, that permit, should it be transferred elsewhere, we would have the opportunity to evaluate that new location, object potentially at that time. Either way, Julep is not reopening at this location, effectively the same result as if we were to continue with an objection. The other three are all reflective of agreements that we have in place, Platform Lounge and both Speedways that we have before you. Again, after multiple discussions with the business owners there, their managers, boots-on-the-ground folks, as well as their attorneys, we've reached agreements that address safeties and security procedures at each of these locations. Platform Lounge specifically actually was partially, two owners, one of whom is now divested from the business, and we've worked with the new owner who is there and has been doing a good job. All three of those locations have improved since even we brought these before you last fall. So, again, just part of our regular process. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you all.
Thank you, Assistant City Attorney Palmeroy. Does anybody have any questions before I move on and actually read the legislation? All right, seeing none, then we'll get started. Tonight I have a resolution, I'm sorry, is it a resolution? I have ordinance number sixty-seven X twenty-twenty-four to withdraw the objection to the renewal of liquor permit number one-two-five-eight-five-three-four held by Carla's New Stand LLC, doing business as Beechcroft New Stand located at nineteen thirty-five East Dublin-Granville Road, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-two-nine, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have sixty-eight X twenty-twenty-four to withdraw the objection to the renewal of liquor permit number seven-five-six-five-seven-three-six held by Roy Walls, doing business as Jack's Corner Club, Corner Pub, located at twenty-four-eighty Summit Street, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-two, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next is sixty-nine X twenty-twenty-four to withdraw the objection to the liquor, renewal of liquor permit number four-one-zero-three-one-four-zero held by I Love High LLC, doing business as Julep, located at ten-fourteen North High Street, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-one, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, seventy-X twenty-twenty-four to withdraw the objection of the renewal of liquor permit number six-five-three-zero-five-eight-eight held by Old Timers LLC, doing business as Platform Lounge located at ten-fifty-eight Country Club Road, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-two-seven, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Next is seventy-one-X twenty-twenty-four to withdraw the objection to the renewal of liquor permit number eight-four-one-eight-nine-nine-four-zero-five-four-zero held by Speedway LLC, doing business as Speedway ninety-seven-fifty-one located at eleven-sixty-five South High Street, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-zero-six, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
And finally, I have seventy-two-X twenty-twenty-four to withdraw the objection to the renewal of liquor permit number eight-four-one-eight-nine-nine-four-zero-five-zero-zero held by Speedway LLC, doing business as Speedway fifty-two-thirty-five located at six-thirty-five East Weber Road, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-one-one, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you very much, Assistant City Attorney Palmeroy. Appreciate your efforts and continued collaboration. Next, I have ordinance five-twenty-two twenty-twenty-four to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreement on behalf of the Division of Fire for the purchase of uniforms from Galls LLC, turnout gear from Lion First Responder PPE Inc., and SCBA equipment from Atlantic Emergency Solutions to authorize the expenditure one million seven hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This legislation authorizes the Finance and Management Director to associate general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contracts. Let's, these uniform turnout gear and breathing apparatus will provide replacement equipment for current division personnel as well as new equipment for incoming recruits. Fire uniforms consist of such items as pants, shirts, jackets, and boots. Turnout gear and SCBA equipment is used by firefighters as protective outerwear in firefighting situations. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Next, I have ordinance seven-forty-five twenty-twenty-four to authorize and direct the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into contract with SGI Matrix LLC to authorize the expenditure of up to sixty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-one cents, to install new card readers to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Franklin County Municipal Court and presiding judge to enter into contract with SGI Matrix LLC. This legislation will be submitted in accordance to the City of Columbus bid waiver procurement. Due to the changes in LEEDs security requirements by the FBI, every probation officer that has LEEDs access must have a card reader for access to their office. Matrix provides service for our current card readers and will install twenty-two new readers as needed in the probation department. The court obtained three bids for the installation of the readers, and Matrix was accepted. They were the lowest bid. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Council President, I'd like to introduce two pieces of emergency legislation from the floor. These contracts are set to expire on March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and in order for the courts to take advantage of the renewal terms in the existing contract, they must be entered into prior to the contract expiring. As a result, this matter needs to be heard now in order to meet that deadline and allow for services to continue. Both ordinances were written as thirty-day ordinances. However, the court was informed by the City Attorney's Office that the timeframe would put them outside of the expiration. To get the authorization approved timely, the ordinance need to be presented as emergency and read in tonight's meeting. Let's see, the services included in both pieces of legislation are integral to the judicial functions, and the court cannot be without these services. So the first of the ordinances that I'm introducing from the floor is ordinance eight-seventy-two twenty-twenty-four to authorize the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into the third year of a contract with Behavioral Science Specialists LLC for the provision of competency evaluations and examination of defendants, to authorize the expenditure of an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the administrative judge and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into the third year of a four-year contract for competency evaluations and examinations of the mental health status of certain defendants that come before the court. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
And finally, I have eight-seventy-four twenty-twenty-four to authorize and direct the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into the second year of a four-year contract with AverTest DBA AverHealth for monitoring services associated with the Secure Continuous Remote Alcohol Monitoring System, to authorize the expenditure of one hundred and eighty thousand for the monitoring services from the Electronic Alcohol Monitoring Fund, and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
And finally, that is all I have this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities and Sustainability Committee chaired by Councilmember Weich. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, I have six ordinances in Public Utilities and Sustainability. First, we have zero-two-three-zero dash twenty-twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify a construction contract for twenty-twenty-two utility cut restoration project with Decker Construction Company for the Division of Water, Division of Power, and Division of Sewerage and Drainage, and to authorize the expenditure of two million dollars from the Water Operating Fund, five hundred and fifty thousand from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund, and fifty thousand from the Electricity Fund. This contract is for restoration work after various types of excavation are performed in the right of way as well as on city-owned property. This typically involves sidewalk curves, existing pavement repairs. So let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. Next, I have ordinance zero-four-seven-zero dash twenty-twenty-four to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a professional services contract modification with Black &amp; Beach Corporation for Wastewater Treatment Facilities General Program Number Five Project to authorize an amendment to the twenty-twenty-three Capital Improvement Budget to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Loan Fund, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to one million two hundred thousand from the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Loan Fund for the contract. These engineering consulting services are necessary to provide technical and engineering assistance to the city, its design professionals, in planning and coordinating the work for this program. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Dea, Cower, Dorans, Favor Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Passed.
Perfect. Next, I have ordinance zero-five-one-one dash twenty-twenty-four to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with BLD Services LLC for lateral into a construction contract with BLD Services LLC for lateral lining Blueprint North Linden One Hudson McGuffey Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the appropriation of funds within the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $12,791,930.50 from the Sanitary Revolving Loan Fund and the Sanitary Bond Fund to pay for the project. This project involves the lining of sanitary lateral pipes for about 1,245 North Linden Homes to prevent excess storm water from entering the city system and reduce basement water events, leading to huge savings to homeowners. Let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Past.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0527-2024, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Elite Excavating Company of Ohio Inc. for the Elizabeth Avenue Area Waterline Improvements Project, to amend the 2023 Capital Improvements Budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $4,327,985.75 from the Water Supply Revolving Loan Account Fund for the contract, and to authorize expenditure of up to $2,000 from the Water Bond Fund to pay for construction administration and inspection expenses for this project. The work under this contract consists of rehabilitating approximately 9,500 linear feet of water mains, service transfer work, and other necessary work. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Past.
Perfect. Next, we have ordinance 0545-2024, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to modify and increase the contract with Brown &amp; Coldwell for the Southerly Waste Water Treatment Plant Design, Digester Process Expansion Phase Two Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of funds from the Sanitary Reserve Fund to the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Program Fund, and to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of up to $3,011,106.84 from the Sanitary Freshwater Market Rate Program Fund to pay for the contract. This modification is to provide detailed design services, funding for design details based on the finding in Phase One of the project, assist with the developing bid documents and bidding assistance. Let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Past.
Perfect. Last, I have ordinance 0676-2024, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with D&amp;M Painting Corp. for the Rome Hilliard West Tank Painting Improvements Project, to authorize an amendment to the 2023 Capital Improvement Budget, to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation between projects within the Water Bond Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,734,758.50 for the project. This project provides painting improvements for the maintenance of a still elevated water storage tank that has a capacity of 2 million gallons. Let me stop there, see if there are any questions or comments from my colleagues. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Past.
Thank you. That is all I have for Public Utilities and Sustainability. However, Council President, I do have an ordinance and rules and policy. Would I be able to continue?
Please.
Okay. We have ordinance 0675-2024, to amend Title 11, Chapter 1150, floodplain management of the Columbus City Codes to require new public streets within the hundred-year floodplain to be the base flood elevation or higher. I move to refer this ordinance to committee.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Deau Coward, Doran's favorite, Green, Remy Weich, President Harden.
Refer to committee.
Thank you. That is all I have tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. While we are in the Rules and Reference Committee, I'll turn the floor over to President Proton.
Thank you, Council President. In Rules and Reference, I have ordinance 0830-2024, to amend various sections of Title 33 of the Columbus City Codes pertaining to council actions on zoning and the zoning initiative and declare an emergency. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend various sections of Title 33 of the Columbus City Codes pertaining to council actions on zoning in the city and the zoning initiative. This legislation was the subject of a public hearing held by Council President Harden and myself back on Thursday, March 14th, here in council chambers. That hearing was aired live on CTV and is available for reference on the city's YouTube and Facebook pages. All of the public testimony heard at that hearing and received in writing was positive, and I appreciate those members of the public who took the time to engage in this process so far. The zoning initiative is based upon the work at the Department of Development and Building Zoning Services as well as the Zoned Advisory Committee. The Zoned Advisor Committee is a diverse group of neighborhood civic and development representatives that have been extremely generous with their time and expertise as we task them with helping to modernize Columbus zoning code. The committee's first, that committee first met November of 2022. The committee has since been meeting monthly to provide input on development of a comprehensive zoning code update that is responsive to community needs and furthers equity opportunity for all in Columbus. Working with the Department of Development, Building Zoning Services, and the City Attorney's Office, council is proposing a set of amendments to Columbus City Codes Title 33, our zoning, our current zoning code. These amendments will lay the foundation for the zoning initiative in city code, as well as introduce references to the new Title 34, our 2024 zoning code, which is proposed under this process. Broadly, these amendments will allow for council to rezone properties in phases by ordinance to further our zoning initiative. The first phase of these properties was announced in April of 2023 and amounts to approximately 13,000 parcels across the city of Columbus, mainly on transportation corridors. The legislation will also codify a public engagement process in which council must solicit public feedback for any changes initiated under the zoning initiative in order to transition from our current Title 33 zoning code to the new zoning code, which will be in city code Title 34. We are anticipating the introduction of Title 34, again, our updated zoning code, in the next month. The monthly, the month-long public engagement process we are codifying tonight relates directly to that new proposed code. Most of tonight's amendments in our legislation concern Chapter 3310 relating to amendments to the zoning map itself. The two main changes are, one, the allowance for council action on the zoning initiative and how the current zoning code relates to the proposed Title 34, the updated zoning code that, again, will come before this body in the next month, and the two public engagement processes which the ordinance will require this council to engage in as we consider that new code. Until the engagement of a new Title 34, we are governed by the current zoning code under Title 33, which makes no consideration for the broad changes of zonings or zoning districts that the zoning initiative contemplates. For example, the City Council Zoning Committee that we heard earlier this evening was governed by Title 33. These amendments to our zoning code will allow for the introduction of the previous versions of a new code. The other central piece of these amendments is the introduction of a public process in which council must engage when considering legislation related to the zoning initiative. Council shall first adopt a resolution declaring its intent to rezone properties from Title 33 to the new districts on Title 34. The passage of that resolution will begin a 60-day public comment period. During that period, area commissions, the Historic Resource Commission, the Development Commission, and any other applicable reviewing bodies of the zoning code must all be provided with supporting documentation and materials regarding the requested changes. Those bodies shall submit any comments they may have on the proposed zoning code changes to council prior to the expiration of that public comment period. The amendments also require council to hold at least two public hearings concerning the proposed changes to taking action on those zoning changes, but does not dictate whether these happen during the 60-day comment period. Council also has to take any comment from the public, area commissioners, the Historic Resource Commission, the Development Commission, or any other applicable reviewing body of the zoning code, as well as any comments offered by the director, into consideration during a scheduled public meeting. The amendments before us here tonight have the following changes. It is allowing any rezoning to the old zoning districts once properties are rezoned into a new district, i.e. once they move into the new Title 34, they will stay there. Declare the current zoning code will not apply to any properties zoned into the new zoning districts unless specifically provided for in the current or new Title 34. Specify that any attempts by building zoning services to change zoning on a property zoned into Title 34 must adhere to this section and any applicable sections in Title 34. Specify that any property to be rezoned or zoned in or other new Title 34 districts, that Title 33 zoning code applies to any application for new or amended site plans or building permit as long as it is submitted and accepted by the Department of Building Zoning Services prior to the effective date of the rezoning of the property and the department approvals have not expired. In all, these amendments will allow council to take zoning actions necessary to implement the zoning initiative, to leverage additional housing for Columbus, foster connected communities, and create a more equitable zoning code. Emergency action is requested on this ordinance in order to meet the current zoning initiative timeline, which calls for public comment to begin on April 9, 2024. The changes to the code must be effective prior to the passage of council's resolution declaring its intent to amend the zoning map. We have several public speakers, but to be tried in my best to summarize this legislation. Essentially, what this legislation here does is sets up the process that will allow us to update and modernize our zoning code. So there's some confusion about 33, 34. Essentially, what we have here tonight is legislation that will allow us to engage in creating a new code section that will be both a zoning code itself and districts that will be covered by the map. None of those changes are on the floor here tonight for us to consider. This is a process piece of legislation, again, to start the public comment period, declare the intent, and to ensure, from a legislative standpoint, we have the ability to move this forward. As you might imagine, when we're talking about 13,000 different parcels, we're not going to have individual pieces of legislation that will pertain to each of those parcels. So this, these amendments will allow council to initiate those actions as a group rather than just individual rezonings. I don't know about anyone else, it's a long council meeting, but it'd be a hell of a lot longer if we had 13,000 individual pieces of zoning coming before us. So this was sort of the most practical way for us to go about setting up the process for what comes next. And again, just to be very clear, the legislation that is in front of us is not the zoning code update or the changes to the map. Again, those will be released to the public for comment in April of this year. So with that, as I've mentioned, we have two speakers signed to speak against this ordinance. First, we have Ms. Rachel Wenning. Ms. Wenning, welcome back to council.
Sorry for sitting all the way in the back. So on Tuesday, the 12th of this month, I got an email from Councilmember Doran's office telling me about a public hearing being held two days later, Thursday, the 14th, on the changes to our zoning code, which are in this ordinance I'm speaking on right now. The email asked for a public comment or testimony from anyone interested, so I asked for a copy of the changes being suggested so I could read them and maybe comment on them. Mr. McCain, your legislative aide politely told me no, but that he could share the language with me after the meeting on the 14th. At that point, I felt that this wasn't really a hearing. It was actually a presentation and probably could have been an email. I asked that he tell Councilmember Doran's and anyone else involved that it's impossible for residents to provide input on changes to the code without reading them first. This is common sense, but I think a lot of times council seems to prefer that they appear to be taking input rather than actually taking input. I was not sent a copy of the changes even afterward. They were posted on Friday, attached to tonight's agenda, I believe on Friday. Somehow, this is being classified as an emergency ordinance, which would justify having only one public reading tonight. And the quote-unquote "emergency" is that the city has set deadlines for itself that it wants to meet. That does not meet the qualifications for emergency legislation. You have created the deadlines, so you are able to change the deadlines. These changes in this ordinance refer to guidelines in Chapter 34 for rezonings when Chapter 34 doesn't exist yet. How can the public and affected property owners even know whether these are changes that they would like, that they prefer, or if they want to comment on them when they haven't been provided in advance with enough time to consider them? So you requested input and then refused to provide me, the zoning chair of an area commission, with a copy of the ordinance, which makes it even more obvious, I think, that you weren't actually seeking input. All of this shows that the changes are intentionally being rushed through, I think, to avoid public input. This ordinance, while it doesn't change the process for rezoning, basically gives carte blanche to create a new process, which won't really have another vote until it, you know, you've worked all those details out. But the issue is that this allows you to move properties into the new chapter, you know, just kind of as you will or as you want to, without taking any public input first on that process. So I asked that this be tabled and reintroduced after adequate time for public comment, because I don't think that there actually was public comment able to be given. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Wenning, and appreciate the points here tonight. Again, to clarify, this is, we are not changing anyone's zoning with this legislation here tonight. Every single property owner of those 13,000 parcels will be given notice. The actual legislation that would change those districts is not before this body right now. I haven't seen that. So again, there's nothing necessarily for those individuals to react to. This is a process piece that would allow us to move forward that process. Again, I'm anticipating that legislation to be introduced publicly next month. When that happens, every one of those property owners will be notified of what those potential changes would be to the zoning currently on their property, and will have the opportunity to engage with council at those public hearings. There's a number of different community engagement that's planned across the city. We're hopeful to be able to vote on that legislation this summer. So we're talking about months of folks being able to react to what the substantive changes of both the code and the map look like. So certainly hear you about the process aspect of that, noted and certainly something we're going to try and do better about in the future. But as far as how that couldn't necessarily allow someone to not be aware of what could happen to their property, we're just not at that place yet. That's not necessarily what is before this body right now. And I think substantively to the question about how to refer from one chapter to the other, again, what is before us here today is amendments specifically to that Title 33. There are references, obviously, to a chapter that doesn't exist yet, but that will be operationalized once that is introduced. So again, we're, again, just setting the ability for council to move forward on this process. So again, appreciate the comments and certainly take to heart about the ability for folks to actively react to what's coming before the body, and certainly something that I think we need to do a better job of making sure that folks are on the same page on the front end.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just think it would have been helpful for us to be able to consider it as a zoning committee on the Hilltop Area Commission, and I just don't think it qualifies as emergency legislation. You know, this is a self-created deadline, so I would ask that you give us time to at least talk it over and consider it.
Thank you. Next speaker to former council on this legislation is Mr. Jobe Muntz. I'm sorry, Councilmember Green.
Well, I also just want to ask a question about this, because I'm not one to give the state legislature a lot of kudos, but, you know, someone who writes commentary about policy for a living in that world, I think, you know, there is a clear and open process to be able to provide feedback, and it is important, I think, if we're making big policy package changes, that those policies, like in their entirety, are available, because when it comes to this type of work, one small word, you know, money going to an agency versus through an agency, like those things have really big impact, right? And so I guess I also am curious, and we might not be at that point yet, but when it does come time for the Title 34 changes, I would be curious to know if we sort of have a plan for how we notify people, not just individual property owners, but that, so that we make sure that that policy package is clear and available for people to be able to provide meaningful comments on that then will consider during that 60-day period thoughtfully, I guess.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmembers. So each individual property owner who is, has, owns property within the first phase of the zoning initiative, so again, to be very clear, the first phase does not touch the entire city. There are the specific parcels that were identified between the Department of Development and Department of Building Zoning Services as main corridors within the city, where they believe increased housing opportunities and transportation opportunities exist. That's why they are coming before us first. Every single one of those property owners will receive notice. Every single one of those property owners will receive notice, minimum twice throughout this process. City's not legally required to provide them, but we're trying to do as much as possible to make sure that every single one of those property owners have noticed well before. The timeline, and I may defer to Director Messer if he has these details in front of them, those notifications will go out. So again, we are expecting in early April for the actual code itself and the maps to be released. So at that point, there'll be parcel owners that can react to good, bad, and indifferent, what they think about that change. And while there's a 60-day public comment period that, again, we would be enacting with this legislation here tonight, council's planning to have multiple hearings during that comment period, and will have likely additional public hearings afterwards. I'm not anticipating, again, Title 34 coming up for a vote until likely this summer, so we're talking about months of opportunity between community engagement between council and also the community engagement that is being done by the zoning initiative on their own. So, you know, I think we are attempting to be as transparent with folks as we possibly can. Again, there's a little bit of confusion when you read Title 33 and Title 34 back and forth, because, again, we're fundamentally creating a new chapter, but we also have to allow the change to occur and have the process to occur to move to that 34. So again, the point of the legislation here tonight is more of a process one, while, again, you know, that's sort of the purpose of the public hearing was to sort of get into those weeds. What most folks, I think, potentially care about most in this process is what does this mean for the piece of property that they own or live next to? And that is something that's going to be very, very, very clear to the members of the public about what a potential zoning change means, again, for wherever they own property or wherever they live nearby. And that's going to be a months-long engagement process to provide feedback to council itself to whether or not we amend what is submitted to us from the Department of Development and Building Zoning Services. Director, I don't know if you have any comment you can provide about the notification that's planned.
President Protam, President Harden, members of council. Yeah, I can add that we have already sent out postcards to the property owners in the fall, and we will have another round. I don't know the exact timing of when those will go out, but we will also have many other opportunities to engage the community. We'll be going to area commissions and other groups once the code is announced. We'll also have an information center here down on the campus here that will allow people to come down and learn more about the process. So there's a very comprehensive communication plan and strategy to engage many, many constituents on this topic once we announce the code.
Thank you, Director. And again, we are planning, again, multiple hearings here, and again, there will be both education opportunities directly from the zoning initiative and from council itself. And directly, every area commissioner should be, once the code is released publicly and the maps are released publicly, every single one of those area commissioners should have access as soon as possible to those. And again, substantively, we're asking for comments to be submitted to council, both either in writing or at those public hearings that we host.
So I'm just sorry, I'm sorry, it's too late, which is why I have so many questions. Is the 60-day period starting today, then? Did I hear you say that?
When's this? I'm sorry, Director.
The 60-day period will start once a resolution is passed by this body. So the new process allows for a resolution to be passed, and that will kick off the 60-day comment period that is outlined in the new changes of 33. So the current Title 33 essentially just says that the zoning map can be changed upon hearing by city council. That's a very short, succinct statement in Title 33. Our whole intent here is to blow out Title 33, to have a more substantive process than that two-line statement that exists right now. So that's the whole point, is to allow the resolution, to allow the 60-day comment period, to call for the hearings, to call for the whole engagement process. That's what tonight's changes are all about.
Thank you, Director. And to be very clear, the legislation tonight does not start that 60-day period. That resolution will come before the body at another time, again, anticipating when the code and the map are released publicly. That is the intention, to be able to start that clock. We need folks to be able to react to something. It's hard to react to anything if you don't have the actual legislation of what the substantive changes to those parcels may or may not be. Any other questions for councilmembers? Thank you. Next speaker to come before council is Mr. Joe Motill. Welcome back to council.
President Harden, Protam, Doran's, members of the city council, Joe Motill. Thanks for the explanation, councilman, and I do have some concerns, though, regarding the wording and such of the legislation. The legislation reads in part, quote, "Emergency action is requested on this ordinance in order to meet the current zoning initiative timeline, which calls for a public comment period to begin on April 9, 2024. The changes to code must be effective prior to the passage of a council resolution declaring its intent to amend the zoning map. That for the reasons stated in the preamble here too, which is hereby made part here of, this ordinance is hereby declared to be an emergency measure," end of quote. And it just appears, as the previous speaker said, that this ordinance is really just being considered to be an emergency for the mere purpose of maintaining a particular timeline. And I think it's a timeline that can certainly be extended without any irreparable harm to the public. So I question, why is this legislation being considered emergency legislation? And as you know, consent action legislation, perhaps, it has to be non-controversial and something that can be done immediately, and this is controversial, and I think it deserves, it should have been put down as a first reading. The other thing is that, let me see here, getting lost in my speaking. How can you pass an ordinance that references a code that doesn't even exist yet? The legislation reads, quote, "Declare that the current zoning code will not apply to any properties zoned into new zoning districts unless specifically provided for in the current or new Title 34 2024 zoning code," end of quote. Yet the new Title 34 2024 zoning code does not yet exist. And besides, your minds have been made up, I feel, that ever since December 20, 2023, when these amendments that are on this legislation were created, which is the date shown at the bottom of the amendment on Page 6 of the attached amendment, so you've actually had plenty of time to hold a first reading or another reading on this particular legislation since December 20. Another part of the language in the legislation is bothersome to myself and many others, quote, "Whereas these amendments will allow council to take zoning actions necessary to implement the zoning initiative to leverage additional housing for Columbus, foster connected communities, and create a more equitable zoning code, updated for current and future development in the city," end of quote. More equitable for who? For instance, those who own single-family homes that are zoned for single-family and various zoning initiative corridors are getting screwed. Local banks are already turning down loan applications to some single-family homeowners for improvements due to the zoning initiative. Potential home buyers for single-family affordable homes in these corridors will not be able to get loans to purchase such homes due to zoning changes. The sale of these single-family homes will have to go to developers. Some have even questioned-
Mr. Motill, please wrap it for comments.
I'm closing, sir.
Thank you.
So I had to wait till this long to speak, so I appreciate it.
Well, with the regular order of meeting-
Some have questioned that the parts of the city zoning initiative could be challenged in the courts as it's being implemented as a way to get around eminent domain. And I'm not opposed to various zoning changes, nor am I 100% in favor of all of them, but I question the legality of this ordinance without two readings, and whenever policy changes are made by council and the mayor, any potential negative consequences that may result from such policy changes are never brought forward by the city. It always seems to be a one-sided dog and pony show, and the residents of Columbus must deal with the negative impacts of any undeniable consequences of such policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Motill. And I would ask, if you are aware of any individuals who are actually being denied mortgages or home, yeah, why don't you go ahead and, I would ask that you send me documentation. That is certainly not an intended outcome of the zoning initiative whatsoever. I think I would love to see the actual documentation from those individuals. I would love to see that. So if you could submit that to my office, I'd very much appreciate that. Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Councilmember Doran. I do just want to reiterate to even our zoning chair, who was here to talk, that the zoning initiative has been going on for 18 months nearly now. We have been talking about this, we have engaged with folks, there have been two sets of surveys that have had over 6,000 responses. And so I would really appreciate, regardless of how you feel about us, regardless of how you feel about this body, that initiatives like this that are so important to our community, that you take the responsibility, do not simply talk about the conspiracy theory that you made up, but actually put the post out there so folks can know what's going on. Actually do the work that we are meant to do. We have relied on area commissioners, we have relied on other folks to help get this word out, and other residents have rolled up their sleeves, have decided to engage and to make the tough decisions. This is going to be the biggest thing that we have to do as a community. And what we need right now is for folks to lean in, take advantage of the opportunities where we actually have to engage, instead of coming up with these ridiculous scenarios that just don't exist. And I am tired of it. I am tired of folks that have a platform that, instead of celebrating any small win, everything is negative. Everything? Our city is fundamentally changing, and we need every voice at the table. Because it doesn't look like how you want it to look doesn't mean that it's a broken process. So I encourage you, over these next 60 days and on top of the 18 months, to please lean in, to please have your folks that have concerns, to tell them not to just sit at home, but to engage with us. We are begging you, we are pleading with you, and no, no one is going to get exactly what they want out of this. But if we're going to make the tough decision, the big decision, for the Columbus of 2050, it starts today. And so I would, again, encourage folks who haven't heard about the zoning initiative, there's an entire website dedicated to it, there's a preliminary map that's been out there twice now, every single resident has gotten two mailers to their homes about this. And I'm not making this up, we got the proof to do it. Director Messer and his team have been out there, answering questions. I'm excited about this process, because they're going to set up an entire war room that is going to be manned every single day, even on the weekends, for folks to come and engage. But that's lost. That's lost in the conversation because of a technicality or a process, of a process that's been going on for 18 months. And so I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, to take this type of tone, but I just want to say that it is, I'm just perplexed as to why folks are trying to act like this has just popped up out of nowhere, and that is not the case. So thank you again for your leadership through this very, very difficult and historic moment in our city, and I also want to thank the public servants who have been out there on the front lines, being yelled at, lied on, disrespected through this process. And it is those folks who will be able to say that they stood up to make the tough decision for a better Columbus. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, councilmember.
Thank you, ma'am, you've had your time. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Any other comments from councilmembers? Thank you. And as I mentioned earlier, the substantive nature of what will come before us from the zoning initiative will be that code and that map that, again, this body will receive in April, and then we will have months to deliberate with the public across the city of Columbus. And again, to Councilmember Bangston's point, this process has been going on for well over a year, and I anticipate a robust engagement both between the zoning initiative that's being, again, led by the Department of Development and Building Zoning Services, but also council. And again, we're setting the place, a process here tonight, that allows us to take the next step. That is all that this is. And moving towards the next step is something, as, again, Councilmember Bangston pointed out, this is going to be one of the bigger things that this council and this city has done to help ensure that the next generation of the city looks more equitable than the previous generation did. And with that, unless there's any other question or comment from councilmembers, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Ockower, Doran's, Faber-Green, Reemy Weich, President Harden.
Thank you. Councilmember, I have one last piece of legislation in reference to an appointment, ordinance A0089-2024, the reappointment of Court Lynn G. Rossard Jones to serve in the Wage Theft Protection, Prevention, and Enforcement Commission with a new term, date of expiration, date of March 31, 2027. Council needs to approve this appointment tonight in order for Professor Rossard Jones to be reappointed in time for the Wage Theft Prevention Commission's next meeting. Do any colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Ockower, Doran's, Faber-Green, Reemy Weich, President Harden.
Past.
And council presidents, all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. See no further business to come before council. Reminder, there is no council meeting next week, the first. We will be back in chambers on the 8th. Is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, De Ockower, Doran's, Faber-Green, Reemy Weich, President Harden.
A meeting is adjourned. We have several-